Welcome to our council meeting. In the interest of time, efficiency, and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made to the public. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. For your information, the items listed in Section 11 of the agenda are for first reading and introduction, and the council will not take final action on them tonight. If you have any questions on these items, please see city staff in the back of the chambers. Thank you for participating in your city government. And we call this meeting to order. And we have the invocation from Pastor Kathy Thacker from First United Methodist of St. Cloud.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for this beautiful day, your presence with us, and this special place. We thank you for our city and all of our public servants. We pray for continued growth in our community and for the blessings and opportunities you give us each day. Thank you for our city personnel, emergency management, fire and police departments, those who serve us each and every day. We pray for our businesses, healthcare facilities, and all who work and live in our fair city. We ask that your blessings on our mayor, Chris Robertson, our deputy mayor, Sean Fletcher, for each and every council member, Jennifer Paul, Colby Urban, and Ken Gilbert. We thank you for the many blessings that you give us. Today, we especially thank you for all our Boy Scouts and recognize their National Boy Scout Day and for all their accomplishments. We ask that you would be with us. We pray for clarity and wisdom in all of our presentations. Help us to work together for good, and we pray that all accomplishment tonight will be for the well-being of our citizens. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pliable leaders.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Paul.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here. All right, and City Manager, do you have any updates for this meeting?
Yes, thank you. Under the presentation section, I would like to ask that we move the team recognition directly after National Boy Scout Day. Unfortunately, our presentation for Employee of the Month was unable to come this evening, so I'd like to remove that from the agenda. And I'd like to add a final presentation at the end by Toho Water Authority CEO Todd Swingle. That is all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, City Manager. All right, and first on the agenda, we have a proclamation for the recognition of National Boy Scout Day. Hey, Scouts, how are you all? Would you all like to come on up here? How's it going? All right, as many of you all know, I was actually a Cub Scout and a Boy Scout in this community. One of my greatest memories was the Christmas parade where they used to, if you all remember, we had a very small town back when I was a kid, and they would actually block up 192 and run that parade right down 192. They would never do that now. That's amazing. It's Troop Nine. Yep, I was Troop Nine. Very cool. All right. Well, whereas the Boy Scouts movement was founded in Great Britain in 1907 by Lieutenant General Robert S.S. Baden Powell, and whereas The Boy Scouts of America was incorporated by Chicago publisher William Boyce on February 8th, 1910, and whereas more than 130 million young men and women have participated in scouting America's youth programs, and more than 35 million adult volunteers have helped carry out scouting America's mission. And whereas the Scout Law is a scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, reverent, and whereas the Scout Oath is on my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country and to obey the Scout Law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. And whereas the Scout motto is be prepared, and the Scout slogan is do a good turn daily. And whereas the mission of scouting America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout Oath and Scout Law. Now therefore, I, Christian B. Robertson, Mayor, along with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby recognize February 8th, 2025, as National Boy Scout Day. Great to see you. Y'all love scouting? Yeah, it is fun. Yeah, we used to go camping all the time in Moss Park. Yeah, y'all go out there too? Yeah, go out and park. All right, thank y'all. Y'all go ahead and sit down here. Thank y'all for coming tonight. All right. And next, we have a presentation by the Small Business Development Center, the SBDC.
Mayor, if we could do the team presentation next?
You are so right.
That way we don't have to turn the podium around.
Yep, thank you. All right, and next, we have a presentation of Team Recognition of the Month to Roger McCrimmon and Norman Murphy.
I'm here on behalf of David Gross, David nominated Norman and Roger, and I would like to share with you the kind words David had to say. On December 3rd, 2024, Roger McCrimmon and Norman Murphy were working together driving down Jersey Avenue around 14th Street. Roger and Norman noticed a little girl crying and asking for help. She and her dog were tangled up in a bicycle. Roger and Norman got out of the truck, helped her and her dog get untangled from the bicycle, and then made sure that she was okay, and as they both walked her home safely. For this reason, I'm happy and proud to present the 2025 Employee of the Month Award to Roger McCrimmon and Carmen Markie.
All right, and next up, we have a presentation by Councilmember Urban, recognition of the Building Department's accreditation.
On behalf of the City Council, I'd like to recognize the Building Department for its
All right, next up, we have a presentation by Maria Cavellos and Rafael Pratt regarding
outstanding work in becoming an accredited building department through the International
the Small Business Development Center, the SBDC.
Accreditation Service.
Good evening.
This prestigious honor is awarded to the building departments that have met national
My name is Maria Savalas and Rafael Pratt.
standards for public safety services in their communities. This accreditation involves the assessment of department goals, policies, and procedures
SBDC, Small Business Developments Center.
in the areas of permitting, planning, and inspections.
Sorry, my bad, I see you guys.
The three main quality areas observed were quality, timeliness, and customer service.
But we are so excited to announce a new partnership with the City of St. Cloud that started this year.
Out of a potential 10 points in each category, our Building Department scored 9.7 for timeliness,
It is an initiative to help those entrepreneurs that want to start a business and those businesses
9.8 for customer service, and 10 for quality.
that are looking to grow, and also to bring attention to St.
We are the ninth building department in the nation to receive this accreditation and honor.
Cloud so that businesses can relocate here. In 2004, we started servicing businesses in Osceola County, and we have been servicing
Congratulations to the Building Department for a job well done.
businesses in the Kissimmee office, St. Cloud businesses, that is. But now it's official that every Thursday, I will be the person that is designated to serve those people that want help to grow the business, and we're there to support them in any way we can. Do you have anything to say?
So, thank you so much, Maria. Good evening, everyone, and the public, the audience. The Florida SBDC has been around since 1976 primarily. We're hosted by University of Central Florida. We offer three main services to the business community. We do consulting on one-on-one basis in confidential nature. We also offer workshops on ongoing basis and then business resource, which is also very informative for business owners to make good decisions as far as how to head their business. With that said, really grateful for the opportunity with the City of St. Cloud to expand and grow and help them as we continue growing our community. With that said, thank you, Antrenan, for leading that effort and putting all this together and for the public servants and also for the city members and citizens of St. Cloud. Thank you.
And one more thing, our services have no cost. If anybody has any questions?
Where do we meet at?
Hold on. Where do we meet at? So, we are located here inside City Hall on the third floor, Economic Development. And then the information, you have to make an appointment in order to see us, and it's every Thursday.
Building B.
Great question. I was going to ask that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night, thank you. And next up, we have a presentation by Toho Water Authority CEO Todd Swingle.
Slide to advance, or? Ah, there we go. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff. I'm here to give you an overview on our billing system. I'll cover several different items, billing overview, rate changes, usage and customer costs, auto pay limits, some equipment failures, and then our summary commitment and response. Toho is responding to an increase in concerns regarding high water bills. We started to become aware of these in December, and shortly thereafter, in very early January, launched several responses, including a dedicated webpage to help answer questions, a dedicated email address so that customers can request individual review of any concerns that they may have. We've shared that information through social media. I do want to note, there's various factors that contribute to these concerns. I wish there was just one answer, but everything is often unique to each customer circumstance. We are also conducting a thorough evaluation of our billing and metering systems to make sure that we don't have any issues as well. A couple of the things that can contribute, there was a rate change that went into effect in the first part of October. Our wastewater and irrigation rates increased by 5%. Our reclaimed rate increased by about 12.6%. That reclaimed rate is set at 75% of the potable irrigation rate. One of the reasons that I want to highlight that as well is that it is still at a discount to potable, but because of the importance and constraints on water supply, that reclaimed water supply is very important for the planning, not only for Toho, for the cities, for the counties that we serve, but the region as a whole. Additionally, on Toho's bill are several city items, including solid waste and stormwater fees. Those increased by about 8.2%, and there may be some locations where those fees are brand-new. So if a property was just annexed in October, historically, that solid waste bill would have been on their county tax bill, and it's now showing up on our Toho bill because as a city service, that's where it's billed instead of on the tax bill. Usage and customer costs, so in a fair number of the circumstances, we see that variability in usage, including high irrigation, is one of the significant sources of bill changes. We do have a tiered rate system in place, so that means that there's a higher cost at increased usage. We start to see some of those significant increases up at 10,000 gallons and above, and there's another tier that then enters in at 20,000 gallons. There can be unusual usage, whether it's more people in the home for the holidays or a pool fill or anything of that nature. We do see leaks, that those can occur, and if they're on the customer side of the meter, that will show up on the meter. But we do offer bill adjustments for certain planned and unplanned events, so we absolutely want people to call us if they see something or send an email to that bill inquiry, because there can be things that, like a pool fill, there could be something, it could be a leak, it could be something they didn't know exactly what it was, and we do provide credits for those. So I will do a review on those, and often will be able to give a credit on that high usage month back to, it typically is their previous highest bill within the last 12 months. So a little bit of overview on our rates and where those were at. Some of the, the rate increase went into effect in October of 2024. You can see that it was a total of about 6.4%. For most of our customers, the average water use in the home is about 4,000 gallons. That's pretty common. Quite a few people do not have irrigation as well, and so currently, their bill would be approximately $92. That includes a little over $50 from Toho and plus the $40 in city fees. Where irrigation is used, the average reclaimed irrigation in St. Cloud and really across our entire service area is about 7,000 gallons. That's an important number because that's also consistent with the CFWI, which is the Central Florida Water Initiative, goal for conservation. Their goal is set to about 115 gallons per person per day on a gross basis. Gross means that they actually include all the commercials as well, so the residential use is actually expected to be lower than that, but it's still a good benchmark comparison. At 7,000 gallons of reuse plus 4,000 gallons in the home, that's about 120 gallons per person per day, assuming three people per household, which is a reasonable density assumption. So that 7,000 gallons is really where we'd like to see people at from irrigation or below. So those conservation tiers go into effect and start increasing above those uses, and especially at that 10,000 gallon mark. You can see that's also where costs can rise significantly because those rates are higher up in those tiers. I have seen and reviewed quite a few bills that were seeing irrigation up in that 15, 20, 25, 30,000 gallons, so that can happen. So definitely, we want to encourage people, we want to work with you. We've got a dedicated team that can help with setting irrigation timers and helping optimize your irrigation systems. Another item that we have identified that we're in the process of changing is that our customers on auto pay have a limit of $300 for credit cards. When a bill exceeds that limit, that auto pay doesn't process. While they do get an email notifying them of that, I know that email inboxes are full and people might miss that. That can definitely be a challenge. If no payment is made, that next bill will reflect the past due amount, and so often people may see a very high bill and it's really two months because that past payment didn't process. So we are in the process of working with the payment vendor to increase that limit to $1,000, which is consistent with the rest of our footprint. Equipment failures. We have been seeing a premature failure of the MTU and MIU, and that's an acronym for the electronic device that we use to send the meter reading back to our office in the computer system. I do want to note that that's not the meter. It's actually just the electronic device, so the meter is still reading. It is, meters can also fail, and we can, in some instances, we can identify that there is a meter failure, but that's not what we're seeing a significant increase in failures of. It is those electronic devices. They were generally, they're sold with a 10-year full warranty and then a 20-year partial warranty. We're seeing a lot of our failure rates across our footprint, not just in St. Cloud, at about that 11- and 12-year mark. We had originally anticipated we would start seeing more failures in that 15 to 17 years as we got closer up to that 20-year expected life. About 6,500 devices are identified for repair or replacement in the St. Cloud footprint, a little over 28,000 Toho-wide, and that's out of a total footprint of over 210,000 devices. So when that does happen, an estimated usage is used for billing purposes. That is based on that customer's prior 12 months, and that's used when an electronic or a manual read is not available. We do make significant efforts to go out and get manual reads even until those devices can be replaced. Once that device is replaced or we're able to get a manual read, we then update the charges. If previously we've overestimated, then we issue a credit on the bill. If we've previously underestimated, then there would be a charge on the bill. But I want to emphasize that that's going back to that that meter has been collecting that data that entire time that the MIU is not in service. However, we do recognize that when we have those estimates, that that's a negative experience on the customer, and that's not where we want to be operating. So just last night, in fact, our board approved an accelerated program for both the St. Cloud area and our entire footprint, increasing our spend from 7.4 million to 12.4 million on our meters and MTUs. Those are budgeted in the same line item, so that's why that's combined. That $5 million increase, though, is really driven by those MTUs and MIUs. The timing on that is uncertain due to contractor availability and the device availability, but we have already been meeting with those vendors, and they've indicated to us that they're prepared to ramp up and they're prepared to ensure that we've got inventory of those devices. Because of the current inventory of those failed devices, those will, of course, be prioritized. This eight-month number also factors in things that we expect to fail over that time period as well, so that we can then get back to a more normal operating stance. So I want to highlight, then, our summary commitment and response. We're absolutely committed to working with the city and our customers to resolve these concerns, to highlight the emails. We've gotten about 133 emails since January 6th to that dedicated bill inquiry. A lot of those were just general inquiries, so 62 of them were related to high bills. Of those, just over 20 was due to consumption. About 12 of those had an identified leak. 17 had either some form of MIU failure or a combination of an MIU failure and a leak. Six were related to increased rates, and then there were several additional that were either pool fill or past due amounts. I do want to highlight as well that this is the data for just that email address. We do take calls. We average about 1,000 calls a day across our footprint, but those numbers have actually been coming down. So again, we just presented to our board last night, and between summer and January in general, we've seen an overall downward trend in calls. We have seen some periodic places where we've seen some increases, but by and large, we're seeing pretty normal call volumes. But we also recognize that where this issue is occurring for people or they have those concerns, that it is very significant to those individuals. So I want to highlight those things that we're proposing and implementing as we speak. First is working on revising that auto pay limit to avoid and reduce any failed payments. The next is the free irrigation consultations available, and those can be scheduled. I've included the link, and please use that. We see really significant results when we can go out and work hand-in-hand with people. Oftentimes, irrigation reductions can be cut in half or even more. There's quite a bit of significant data that's out there of being able to work with people to reduce that irrigation demand. Accelerate the MTU and MIU replacement, as I just mentioned, with that increased investment, and again, prioritizing those that have already failed. Customer-specific bill evaluations. Send us an email at thatwaterbillquestions@tohowater.com. We will also be having staff come here to City Hall to be able to offer in-person bill consultations. We've also brought a sheet tonight, and we'll be out in the lobby after my presentation, so that if anyone that is here in the audience, happy to take their name and contact information so that rather than having to send us an email after the fact, we'll go ahead and take that information. And then again, those bill adjustments are available for certain planned and unplanned events. So we know that if customers reach out to us, that's absolutely the best way to know that there's a concern, and we want to address that concern no matter what. But we also recognize there may be people that haven't, that don't pay attention to those bills or that aren't aware of how to get in touch with us. And so in addition, we're ramping up our bill and data evaluations. We're going in and starting a process to look at where we've seen bill variations above certain thresholds. So if they've had variability over the six months that's abnormal compared to others, especially if we've seen any estimated bills, so we're already, we've already started pulling that data and intend to do bill reviews on those whether we receive a request or not. And so that's one of the things that we want to make sure that we ramp up. And we have, we'll be launching an expanded St. Cloud area dedicated webpage to make sure that citizens can go and review this information. It'll have this presentation that I've given, as well as all of those links and our frequently asked questions. That will actually be launched tomorrow. And then before I move on to the utility management update, I do want to highlight that the other piece that we absolutely recognize is that we've got to make sure that we're meeting people where they're at, that we're having the conversation with them, that we're also looking internally. And so when we, part of our expanded efforts will also be to ensure that we're working with our customer service staff, our field techs, to make sure that they've got full visibility of the potential issues, even those that can be ours, whether it's an estimated bill with an MTU or if there is a meter issue, to ensure that we're really thoughtful about whether it's our issue or the customer that we're working with as far as usage patterns and things of that nature. So, and our chief customer officer is here tonight as well, and she will be launching additional training and scripting programs with those And then, again, those bill adjustments are available for certain planned and unplanned events. So we know that when, if, if customers reach out to us, that's absolutely the best way to know that there's a concern, and we want to address that concern no matter what. But we also recognize there may be people that haven't, that don't pay attention to those bills or that aren't aware of how to get in touch with us. And so in addition, we're ramping up our bill and data evaluations. We're going in and starting a process to look at where we've seen bill variations above certain thresholds. So if, if they've had variability over the six months that's abnormal compared to others, especially if we've seen any estimated bills. So we're already in, we've already started pulling that data and intend to do bill reviews on those whether we receive a request or not. And so that's one of the things that we want to make sure that we ramp up. And we have, will be launching an expanded St. Cloud area dedicated webpage to make sure that citizens can go and review this information. It'll have this presentation that I've given, as well as all of those links and our frequently asked questions. That will actually be launched tomorrow. And then, before, and before I move on to the utility management update, I do want to highlight that the other piece that we absolutely recognize is that we've got to make sure that we're meeting people where they're at, that we're having the conversation with them, that we're also looking internally. And so when we, part of our expanded efforts will also be to ensure that we're working with our customer service staff, our field techs, to make sure that they've got full visibility of the potential issues, even those that can be ours, whether it's an estimated bill with an MTU or if there is a meter issue, to ensure that, you know, we're really thoughtful about whether it's our issue or the customer that we're working with as far as usage patterns and things of that nature. So, and our chief customer officer is here tonight as well, and she will be launching additional training and scripting programs with those customer service techs to make sure that we're covering those well. And finally, I would like to propose that we, we do an expanded utility management update with you and propose around the end of the March, I'd reach out to the city manager. I understand that March 27th might be open. And what we'd like to do is both give you an update on where we're at with resolving these billing concerns, but then also a comprehensive update on where we're at with management of the utility as well. Because there are quite a few things as well that we have accomplished. We've seen significant increases in pressure up in the Narcosi Corridor, where we've just signed the contract for the process changes and reconstruction of Water Plant Four, and quite a few additional things that we have accomplished during the time period that we've been here, and we'd like to. Our priority right now is on making sure that we're addressing these concerns, but we also do want to have that conversation about really our holistic management approach for the utility as well. In the meantime, as well, though, we will be providing updates to the city staff, and as mentioned above, making sure that those responses that we're providing to residents, that they're copied so that, because transparency is absolutely important to us. So our intent is to go ahead and provide those analysis of the data as well as those responses that we're giving to customers. And with that, I would like to entertain any questions or discussion that you may have.
All right. First, we have, thank you, Todd. Appreciate you, my friend. Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Swingo. I was one of those customers that had a, we had a credit card on file and the bill was over the credit card on file, so it did not take payment, and then a month later, we got a late charge and a notice to shut off our water. We have plenty of folks that are in, in, in our house that, that live there, and I appreciate two things. One, that you decided to raise that limit, and then I would like you also noticed when St. Cloud saw irregular charges, they would notice that the, the customers, do you have like irregular charges? Did you fill up your water? And I've got silly calls from citizens that said, listen, the house is flooded, my water bill is $8,000. And I go, well, is one of your sprinkler heads busted? So I, I've seen both ends of that spectrum, but with social media being as the way it is, I would, I appreciate you reaching out to us on social media. A lot of the folks that I've heard from the citizens just want to be informed, and, and they want to have proactive measures. I see that. I also signed up for the irrigation specialist because I was two days a week, and I was overwatering my lawn, which I, I'm not a lawn expert, but, but if you bring that to the table and offer that to citizens in St. Cloud, I think that would be a, a great thing for us. And, and thank you for spending the time to come up there. I yield back, you mayor.
All right. And councilmember Urban.
Yeah, just would, would like to thank Todd for coming here tonight, and, and just wanted to say, you know, I've had residents contact me as well directly, and, and we were able to, TOHO was very attentive and quickly able to help resolve their issues or figure out what, what's going on. And, and with that, I just want to say, please, reach out to us. I think all of our direct phone numbers are on the, on the city's website, so reach out to us, and we can help get you in contact with anybody at TOHO in addition to all of the, the resources that were outlined in, in this, in this presentation tonight. As Todd mentioned a little bit, the, the infrastructure investments that TOHO is doing to our community is, it's absolutely incredible, and I, I think he was a bit humble in, in explaining some of the things that, that were, are being done right now, and I look forward to the workshop and learning more about that. I'd also encourage the city council to, to schedule a tour out in the, the water treatment plants. It's really, really amazing. With that, also, one of the issues that I've seen, and unfortunately, the city has had to raise some of our fees, stormwater and solid waste and things like that, which are also on the TOHO bill. I was going to bring this up at my time at the end, but I would like to see eventually us moving towards taking the city charges off of the TOHO bill and putting them either separately on the tax rolls or something separately so that it's not confused with, with TOHO charges, if maybe we can explore that opportunity to, to do so in a future workshop or just start that process. I think that would also help with some of the confusion on the charges, too.
City manager.
I'm, I'm just looking for consensus.
Yeah, we can add it to the workshop, I guess, probably when we have Todd. That might be a good time to talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's all. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Paul.
First, I want to say thank you to Mr. Swingo for your presentation. I know I have sent people over your way in also creating that email link and for people to use, and I have also encouraged people to use that when they have billing issues. One question I have, I know they're not accepting cash downstairs. Are there other locations that people can go to that will accept cash?
Yes. So when, when that, accepting cash was stopped here, it's opened up with Am Scott, and because of not accepting it here, we absorb the Am Scott fee, so they can still pay cash with, without incurring any payment fee at those locations. And that information is also on our website as far as where they can pay.
Thank you.
All right. And Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
I just want to say thank you for taking the time. I know that we've spent a lot of time going back and forth and digging into this issue, and I just appreciate you on being upfront and transparent of, of, you know, some of the concerns that the residents are having. I've had residents reach out to me, and I've encouraged them to, to reach out to TOHO as well as copy me on those emails in the future. I know that, that if there, there is an issue, I know it's a, it's going to get handled by the customer service team over at TOHO, and if there is any charges that are obviously validated, that you guys will work with them for a payment arrangement or something of that nature. I think the, the auto pay increase is a, is a, is a great thing. I actually have the, the same thing. And then, the $5 million investment into the, I'm calling them transponders because I was confusing them, in, into the transponders and, and moving that replacement up, I think, will definitely be, be helpful. I'm in favor of the workshop. I think there's a lot of, we've had several workshops in, in the past, you know, you know, four or five months, or at least the time that I've sat on the council, and there's been nothing but good things that came from them. I would also encourage, I know that you guys work a lot with, with social media. You came here and spoke today. Perhaps the, the, the public information office, your public information office and our team could work together to maybe push some of the information out that we've received this evening so that others in the community can see it, because a lot of folks, you know, they're not necessarily, you know, come to the council meetings, they're following up, they're getting the information from social media. I mean, kind of what Councilmember Gilbert said, you know, you gotta call. Like, like, you know, you, you can't go online and say, oh, well, my bill's high. You know, TOHO's not going to say, oh, let me, you know, send a Facebook message. You got it, you have to call. And even if they call me or send me an email, like, like Colby said, you know, everybody's telephone number is up on the website, our cell phones, you know, it's right here. If you call it right now, it'll ring. So, so reach out to us. I believe that TOHO is, you know, committed to, to working with the residents to get their issues resolved, and I appreciate you taking the time to come and see us this evening. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. And, and if I could just respond to one thing, we, we absolutely take calls. If you can, please use the, that dedicated email address, because that's routing into a team that I have dedicated to support this specific activity that we've already worked with on training to make sure that those are getting looked at. So we welcome calls, and then, you know, people have their own preferences on communication style. The, that dedicated email address is, is the best and preferred, but we, we certainly accept any communication, so whether it's a call or that email.
Yeah. All right. Todd, yeah, also, thanks again for coming here today. About a month ago, two months ago, we sat down, you and your staff with me, and, and went over the entire system. I'm amazed. I mean, I had a million questions, and I still would love to sit down and talk more hours with you about this. And I will say, you know, TOHO Water took on this task about two years ago, I believe you took over our water utility, and it, we had some challenges, and I do, I do want to highlight, he, he spoke about Plant Four, and that was one of the biggest ones that, that created many of the challenges here. And some of the things that we talked about were adding that extra polisher, the, the filter on the back end of it, until you do a complete changeover, right? That's going to change over to a different type of system, right?
Yes, that's correct. So we added additional filters on the back end of that plant that are rental units that are in there. We actually had those up and running within a year of taking over management of the operation. Those continue in place until we make the process change. So, and the process change will go over to a more traditional ion exchange. It's a lot like the water softener that was, is at your house, if you have a water softener. And so it's, that will be switching to that process. We've already issued the contracts. We acquired new property next to the plant in order to have enough space, and the, because of the long lead items are still, the water sector is still suffering from supply chain issues within post-COVID. And so one of the things that we do, and I think on this particular plant, we issued three different sets of contract orders because of long lead items. So back in the, I don't remember the exact date, but well into last year, we ordered the actual vessels. Those were the longest lead. And then we ordered electronics equipment, and we were now signing those contracts and have the, the vendor, that's the contractor, moving forward. I think we're scheduled to start out into the field here by this summer for actual construction.
Okay. Yeah. And, and like the rest of us up here, you know, I, I received many emails and calls, and, and I'm confident that Todd and his team are going to reach out to every single one of those and address these issues. So, thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming up here tonight.
Thank you. And we'll be out in the lobby for anyone that's here and that would like to give us that information.
Yes, sir. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and uncontroversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. And do we have any items on the consent you would like to pull, council? Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
I just wanted to speak about item F there.
And I would like to pull item L.
If we could talk about item C, mayor?
Yes, sir.
That would be great. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Item F, this is an investment. We are purchasing a pumper truck for the, the fire department. I always like to highlight significant investments in our fire services. So thank you, chief, in your department for your leadership in bringing this item forward to serve the residents. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I was actually going to pull that as well. I'd like to hear some, some more information about that pumper truck. Fire Chief Miller.
Good evening. Jason Miller, Fire Chief. The item for you tonight is for the purchase of one Pierce Fire Pumper Truck. It's an Forcer Series engine, which probably doesn't mean a whole lot to you, but just picture it as, you know, F-150, F-250 type of situation. It's just one of their models. This fire engine is designated to be the engine for Fire Station 36, which you know is in our strategic plan, has approved the bonding later on the site. There's another item in front of you that will be impacting Fire Station 36 as part of the consent agenda. So this just puts us in line with the growth plan for the fire department that you're all aware of. The Pierce Fire Trucks, we, for those of you that were able to make it up to the plant in the past, it, it's just an amazing product in comparison to some of the other stuff out there on the market. We met with the finance director, and he recommended going ahead and doing the payment upon receipt as opposed to a few, a prepay, we guess like discount. He felt that he could do better with the money investing it on the city's behalf. So with that, you have a fire truck that will be here in three years if you approve it tonight.
And, and as I've seen in past fire trucks, that if you, if you wait, then the cost goes up.
On average, fire trucks are going up between 6% and 10% a year. Again, as was just mentioned with the water department, those supply chain issues, they're real still. I don't know how better to put it. Our brush truck that we built here in the city, we ordered a hose reel for it, and it took 11 months to come in. Yeah. It used to be a stock item. So, yeah, better to order now. We actually took some of the, some of the different features off of this truck to get it down to a three-year build time. If you go, like, some of the departments up north who go with all the bells and whistles, they're up to a four-year-plus build time on some of those really big customized trucks. So we're trying to make the taxpayers' money go as far as we can and still get a product that meets our needs.
Yeah. And, and as our population rises at that same rate, our public safety is important. You know, we need, we need to ensure that we have our ample fire service and...
And we, we appreciate all your support. As you know, you have fire headquarters coming up in the future. You've got to rebuild a Fire Station 32, Fire Stations 35 and 36, plus these trucks that you've supported us on. We greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And item number C, Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes, mayor, if, if I may amend that to C, D, and K. And the item number C, which is an adoption of the rental fee waiver and reduction, we have done that in the past because what we're trying to do as a city, what I believe, was recouping the expenses that we have for these events, fire, police, safety, parks and rec. And I know that some folks would like these waivers to be put in place, but there's expenses to do events, and I've done, we did, my company does events the year round. So I, I think that the, the cost, again, it can be just that cost, but writing a waiver at no cost is taxing the citizens of the city of St. Cloud that might not, not necessarily be a part of that program. So I would just like to reinforce that the fees are just to cover our costs, and that the waiver fees, I have to look at it as a whole, and you and I have talked about things, and we were here to protect the citizens, but there's some citizens that aren't into the birdwatching society, so to speak, but we need to have additional staff to do that. So I'm in favor of continuing the, the, the no, no waiver fee for these, just to cover our costs for the citizens of St. Cloud, if that makes sense to you, mayor and, and council. As we said that, when we did that, we passed that resolution, I think it was last year or the year before. So I, I just think it's a good resolution. I, I'm not against NPOs, I'm not against any of that, but there are cost factors for everything we do within the city. And as you said earlier, safety is, is one of the most important things. So, so that's my comment on, on C.
And, and these are just comments. You're, you don't want to change that. You're...
Nope, I don't. I just want to explain to the citizens, sometimes we give them acronyms, we give them information that they don't quite understand why we're doing some things, and I just want to, in this public forum, to explain that. And then the same thing as our, quote, construction with the Chisholm Boat Ramp. Those boat ramps were built in 1992. They don't, they're not safe. It's a great park, and then we are investing the taxpayers' dollars to do that, which is going to be a great product. We were given that facility from Osceola County years ago, but it was in some disarray. So I think those boat ramps and those things that we're doing and investing in, in, in the city is, is a great thing. So I just wanted to comment on that. I don't want any changes, but I just want to explain to the citizens, we are trying to make, you know, let's, let's face it, you know, St. Cloud used to be the greatest secret. It's no longer a secret. We're the best place to live, best people, and, and best city in, in Florida. And you would probably see that if anybody read the news, that we were voted the number one safest city in the state of Florida. So, so those are things that I think the public needs to know, and I think we need to go on record, record for that. And I love the idea of our radios with Orange County. Right now, we're encrypted. Now, if we need to help out Orange County or Seminole County, our radios are encrypted. We don't have to go to a fire station and ask for their radios. And I think the fire department has a big kudos to that, to, to be able to respond quicker by using technology to, to, to do that. And with that, I just yield back, those are things I just wanted to mention through this agenda, that citizens in St. Cloud, I, I believe they're entitled to, to understand why we, why we do these things. Now, yield back, you mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I wanted to pull item L. Council, you know, we had a few workshops where we discussed the Veterans Advisory Council, the Veterans Council for the city council, the St. Cloud Veterans Council, which is the first. Osceola County's never had one, City Council's never had one. This is the first one. I think it's groundbreaking. It fits right in with Soldier City. We have Larissa right here is very proud of our, of our heritage here in the city. So with, with that, I, I was speaking with, with a number of other folks, and, you know, we had talked about 10, a combination of 10 citizens or organizations that the council would be able to select. 10, a combination of 10 citizens or organizations that the council would be able to select, and five of the designated seats for, say, State Representative Paul Stark, Congressman Soto's office, where they're designee. We have somebody from Senator Rick Scott's office, but I'd like to add two more seats on that side, and one for Senator Ashley Moody, who's our new U.S. Senator, somebody from her office. Obviously, she probably won't be able to be the one on it. But, and also, I had spoken with John New Street from the Osceola Chamber, and he has interest in this. And I believe that's important to, we'll gain access to a much larger network outside of St. Cloud. And that's what we're really trying to do, is do everything we can to help our St. Cloud veterans within our community. So, I'd like to make a motion to add those two seats for Senator Ashley Moody's and the Osceola Chamber, if that's okay.
So, thank you. So, the current makeup of the board then would increase from 15 to 17 members?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And just, so when we drafted this, we followed historically how things are done. Typically, when there's a board that is made up of city residents and non-city residents, we typically want to make sure that the quorum number corresponds with the number of city residents. That's what we've done. If the council is interested in following that path, we can, we would then be changing the number of city residents to be on the 17-member board. It's currently listed as eight, so then it would go to nine, so that a majority of the board would be city residents. But that's, and I'm just pointing out historically, if that doesn't matter, then that's fine. Yeah, so...
Yeah. And I don't know that that matters. When it comes to this type of a board, I think we need to kind of bring in as much help. And I think there are organizations around central Florida, or obviously, since we're adding like Senator Moody, obviously, she, somebody in her staff most likely will not be a resident of St. Cloud, or, I know John New Street is not, but he would like to be serving on that.
So, what, so the way we drafted it was, the city, the minimum number of, in the current version, the minimum number of city residents is eight. So, it was intended, intentionally intended like that, so that the council would be appointing 10 members. So, basically, the way it would work was the, as I would envision it, eight of the council's 10 appointees would be city residents, right? And then, all the other designated seats, as you refer to them, which is what they are, they could essentially be anybody. So, those offices, chambers, the senator's office, the House of Representatives Senate, and the State Senate, those could all be any, anybody. It's just the 10. If you're right, we can just leave it at that. That's fine. See how it goes. We've talked about this at the workshop. This isn't going to be an evolving committee. It may change a couple of times over, probably change several times over its lifetime. So, but I just want to point that out.
And maybe we not limit ourselves to, can we do half of our board picks? Maybe five?
You can do whatever. Yeah. I just want to point out so we can have that discussion.
Maybe one on, one on one?
Yeah. Again, we followed historically how we've done these special purpose committees in the past. This is obviously a unique one. Obviously, there's value into having as many people on the board like this, as committed as this as possible. So, just tell us what number you want, and there's the number.
Okay. Would that be good? Minimum of five for a quorum of, but the quorum would still be, for a meeting, is still eight?
Still going to be, well, with 17, the quorum would be nine.
Could be nine. But we need a minimum of the selective, the selected folks, it would have to be five city.
Five city residents.
So, if we agree, each one of us have one that's in the city? Can we put that language in there, that it's?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. So, we can put it in there that, again, the way we change is now each council member will have two appointees. We can put it in that one of the council members, too, shall be a city resident.
Perfect.
At least one. It could be more, but at least one. Okay.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion on those changes. For Resolution Number 2025-029R, I make a motion to add a seat for Senator Ashley Moody's or designee, and one for the Osceola Chamber or designee, and to at least one of each of the council members' picks has to be a city resident, but keep in, of course, we have the quorum of nine.
Right.
We have a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. We'll go back to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Next up is Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on the agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to, or as soon as practical thereafter, the person addresses the council. And first up, we have Alicia Young. Alicia, please state your name and address of the record.
My name is Alicia Young, and I'm at 424 Kentucky Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. I am here to talk about a code compliance that I received on December 19th about a eight-foot fence that I am requiring or possibly wanting to get for my Great Dames. I have, I used to have a six-foot fence, and they can literally jump right over it. So, I have a picture to show that my dog can actually jump over the fence, if you can see it. So, I did get, I did talk to Everett Cole at the code, the code compliance, or the code supervisor, and he told me about a variance that I could get for $500. That is a yes or no action. It's give you guys $500, and it is a yes or no. It's kind of a big gamble for me. I don't mind paying for the fee, but we all know 99.9% is going to say no because it's in the code that you can only have a six-foot fence. So, today, I'm just asking if we could possibly amend the code or give me a something, you know, sorry, a variance, thank you, a variance for this, to just be able to have the eight-foot fence due to safety of my dogs, and also that they don't have harm or anything with them. They're very, very skittish. So, anytime I live a block away from the fire department, they will jump over the fence the minute the fire department goes off. Anytime there's an event, fireworks, anything like that, they are just, they're over it. They can be over it within two seconds. They can be over it within 30 seconds. So, the eight-foot fence is very needed for them, and I'm just asking if we could possibly figure out a way to be able to keep the eight-foot fence.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah. I would like to look at where this property is located, and if it's impeding on any other citizens. And I understand, because I've had Australian sheep dogs, they jump over pencil fences, and frisbees also. So, I would like to see what it's affecting to the other citizens around her, if I may. I don't know how to go about that, Mayor, so I'm asking you and the city manager to advise me.
City Attorney?
Yeah. So, you cannot grant a variance. You don't have the authority. There's a board of adjustments that can do that. So, you can, of course, review the code that's being referred to about the necessity of a six-foot or an eight-foot fence and how to do that. You do have the authority to change the code, but tonight, you can't grant a variance. The $500 she's referring to is to go through the Board of Adjustment process and go in front of that board and seek a variance. So, those are your options to look at it. And I think we all in these directions, the city wants, city council wants to explore amending the code. We can do that.
Council, Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
I know that we have spoken several times, and I did see that you called me today, but it's been a busy day, and I think it affects you. I have had several conversations with the city attorney regarding your property and what we can do to kind of get you across the finish line, if you will. I know it's a very unique situation. We, you know, so we could, we could change the code, and then we, then we, that would allow eight-foot fences all over, say, the grid, you know, for example, which wouldn't necessarily be aesthetically pleasing for the whole grid, you know, to have walls everywhere. And the, when you look at the code, it would most likely, I mean, I can't speak for staff, you know, probably go forward with a recommendation of denial. But there are ways, and perhaps staff could speak to you regarding it when you go to present your case, that could provide, cut me off if I'm not allowed to say anything, property-specific recommendations so that the approval could be only specific to your property based on certain conditions, such as, and again, forgive me, like, say, you sell the property, you know, the dog gets older, things of that nature. Unfortunately, you would have to go through that process and per se risk, you know, the $500. But I think if you went the route in which, you know, the city attorney and I and you have discussed, I think your chances would be a lot higher. Unfortunately, we just don't have the authority to grant the variance on a whim here. And I think if we did change the code in its entirety, it would end up taking, it would take quite some time to change the code because it would have to go to plenty commission. It would have to go here, it would have to go there. So, those are my comments.
And we'll just, if I could, Mr. Councilmember, we'd have to discuss this. Anything that happens on a variance is specific to that piece of property. So, the facts have to be unique enough as it relates to those things. There is one threshold standard or review in a variance request, and that is whether the need for the variance is basically caused by the applicant for the variance. And that might be a difficult one to address on that. I don't say in the board. Board of Adjustment is an independent issue. This council has no control over the Board of Adjustments. They see need and penalty, they look at it. So, but that is one of the threshold criteria to grant the variance, is who, how, did the applicant, is the reason for the variance because of the actions of the applicant? And that's one of the big issues with those. So, we're happy to meet with her and discuss with it. I think staff, and I speak for the city manager, staff would spend some time in sort of like the pre-application process to go through it with her before she has to write a check.
Yes, we would, but I would tell you that the criteria that he just stated, staff would have to recommend denial.
So, that is a denial if they create the issue?
Yeah. It's what's called a self-inflicted hardship that warrant for the, for the variance request.
What if the dog creates the issue by growing too fast?
Or just being a big dog.
And they're, and, yeah, so, that's in the code, so...
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Could we recommend denial, denial with a recommendation of, well, if you did, then this is what, you know, the timeframe and all of that stuff?
I can't speak for staff because they have to look at it. And remember, the staff, when they present cases in front of your Board of Adjustment, they have to remain as consistent as possible. So, they really can't do it. We did talk about, and this is appropriate in a variance, if they were, if the Board of Adjustment were to agree that that threshold had been met, the variance could be conditioned, like you said, on issues like if the house was ever sold or issues like that, that the fence couldn't stay at eight feet. You could do that, but you still, I think Mrs. Miller is correct in pointing out that that first threshold is going to be the most difficult piece of this.
But I had a Great Dane, and I love them.
And so...
I love them.
Where can we turn this ship a little bit?
I mean, I think we could, we could look at, we can look at some of the reasoning, if you want, for the need for an eight-foot fence. I have been in this business a long time. Eight-feet and six-foot fence has been the limitation that most communities have, especially in the front. It's typically related to safety issues, typically related to having to go on the site and not, and the law enforcement not really knowing what's on the other side of the fence because it's eight feet tall.
I have an idea. Normally, I wouldn't say this from the dice. What is if you put a two-foot burn along the side, and then put the fence on top? Can't do that?
I asked to put lattice on the top, and I can't even do the lattice.
Right.
So, if there's, I put trees in front of it, but...
And which, where, what side of the yard is it? The back or the side, or what's?
So, the house is here, and then, of course, it's, you know, in the middle of the house, right in the front. I mean, when you're looking from the street, the house is here, and it's the easement, the back of the easement, you know, where by code it would go. I don't know how to explain it.
So, it's the front fence?
So, like, if this is the house, it's right here. This is the front of the house.
But that's just a fence. What if, what if they built a wall?
The wall could be...
That connected to the house. Could they add on to the house?
But it would still have to be six, couldn't be any taller than six.
Couldn't be any taller than six foot fence, yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, I would say I have dogs also, and nobody likes to use the invisible boundaries and things like that, but there are other options.
We've tried everything. She just goes right over it. One of my dogs is 220 pounds. The other one's 140. And they just, the shock collars, and I don't, I mean, I have to put it up to 60 for him to just to say, you know, kind of. So, I don't want to keep doing that, you know?
How often are they getting out, jumping the fence?
So, it has been a very long process. I actually had a job at State Farm, and I had to quit my job because I had to leave probably every hour to go get the dogs because they were just, if they would go outside and a lot of car went by, or they would, she would just jump over. And then, I've had to go get them from the pound. It's just been a lot of, you know, stuff. One time, I mean, she even got stuck on the one time going over, and nobody was home. I just went to the store just really quick, and I had to run home and push her off because her hind legs got stuck. So, it's just been a kind of, and I figured an eight-foot fence would be great, but apparently, it's, it is great. It actually stopped her from going to the last couple, you know, the last couple of weeks. There was an incident across the street with a gentleman, our neighbor, with a lot of yelling and the police coming. And she just barked, and she never jumped over once. I sat and watched her to make sure.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Just a variance to that. A multi-lane highway should be able to get a variance on an eight-foot. Is, are you by a multi-lane road?
I am. Actually, I'm not by a highway. I'm right on the state streets. I'm probably three blocks away from here. So, but when you guys close down the city for anything, any events that you guys have, anything downtown or anything at the lakefront, the fireworks, anything that goes on, my, my street is the first street that is open. So, that becomes pretty much at any event, one, I do. And we don't have any sidewalks. We don't have anything there. So, you do have a lot, a lot, a lot of cars and a lot of yelling, or kids, or anything like that. So, it does on any event. It's wide open for that.
Okay. City Manager, I'd just ask if staff can go through every possible scenario, if they can find a way. If not, you know, that's the, I understand that the, what the city attorney was saying, obviously, that a reason, if it's caused by the applicant, then it's a, it's a reason to deny. But if there's a way to make it possible anyway, that's within the code, then if we can at least look at it, so... Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have the Lakeview Elementary Community Club.
Why, hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Dunn, and I live out in the manor in Packer to have. But these are my friends that live right downtown, and we go around the community and do lots of fun, different things. And we also do things like tonight where we have to have lots of patience and sit through long meetings and like, be still. And that's a part, part of government, too, is to learn how to be respectful and to sit through meetings and to, to understand what goes on, and that you're away from your families, you're missing dinner, it's really late, it's almost time for bedtime. Like, this is what you do every single month. Like, so, we're, we give, just giving you kudos. So, what we're going to do is, we are going to read a letter really quickly, and I'm just going to ask permission to approach you. Is that okay if they can?
Absolutely.
So, they're learning to hand something to you and shake with the appropriate hand, look you in the eyes, be bold and be confident, just like this. You ready? Hi, my name is Stephanie. Thank you for our police officers and our water. And I would walk over to a friend.
Hi, my name is Kamala. Dear city council, thank you for, for running the community for us. Love, Kamala, with you. Hi, hi, my name is Maylin. Dear city council, thank you for service, water, and keeping
Dear city council, thank you for service, water, and keeping our streets clean.
Hi, my name is Lena, and thank you for fixing our roads, our homes, and our, and cleaning our roads.
We did a lot of research on all these communities.
Hi, my name is Jackson. Thank you for fixing our fence and making our playground.
Hello, my name is Nikki, and thank you for keeping us safe and help fixing problems.
Try that.
Hello, my name is Kai. Dear city council, thank you for the water. From Kai.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
My name is Allison. Dear city council, thank you for roads, water, and houses.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth. Dear city council, thank you for hiring officers, getting garbage trucks, and hiring firefighters and medics for us.
Thank you so much for this opportunity for our kids to be able to be bold and speak proudly. Thank you so much.
That was amazing. Wow. Very nice. Uh, council, hey, kids, hold on a second. We want to talk to you for a second. No, come on up here. Y'all want to come on up? Councilmember Urban.
Oh, I was just going to ask if we could get a picture with him as a former Lakeview dog on my cell phone.
Y'all want to go down there with him? Yeah. You too.
I live at 461 Clay Drive in St. Cloud. Regarding the Veterans Advisory Council, our city's been all about veterans right from the very beginning. The town was created by veterans for veterans. The National Tribune, a Washington DC-based newspaper that was by, for, and about union veterans, created the town in 1909. They made the first land offer, proposed the colony, made the land offer, just to test the waters to see if people would be interested in moving to central Florida. Boy, did they ever, I mean, veterans came here from all over the country, from Maine to California, we even have one in the cemetery from Alaska. And St. Cloud became a boomtown. Twenty years later, though, in 1929, things were looking very bleak. The country was on the brink of the Great Depression. St. Cloud was facing really hard times and a declining population. More than half of St. Cloud's union vets had died in the 1920s decade, and the few that remained were all over 80 and dropping off pretty quickly. So the city was in desperate need of rejuvenation. And what St. Cloud did in 1929 was look to its past to find a future. And they decided having this remain a veterans' town, reestablishing that identity that they had created 20 years earlier was the way to go. So they created a special publicity commission to come up with a nationwide ad campaign to attract younger veterans, younger meaning from post-Civil War, Spanish-American War and World War I veterans. And they made a land offer similar to what the National Tribune did. This time, they offered 1,000 free city lots to any qualified veteran. And the National Tribune, as our city's founder, agreed to sponsor the promotion. One of their tasks was to create a catchy marketing slogan. And they were really bad at that at first. For a long while, they were stuck on the original soldier's home of Florida, which makes the town sound like the nursing home with everybody, you know, with one foot in the grave. And they really was not going to cut it, until someone came up with the phrase Soldier City. It was succinct, it was to the point, it was catchy, I mean, it was brilliant.
Can you keep talking?
Oh, thank you. The citizens of St. Cloud loved it, and to the point where they wanted to back this land offer giveaway wholeheartedly by donating money. In the Great Depression, there were people who donated as much as $100, which was a lot of money in 1929. People donated city lots, if they owned two lots, they would donate one to the city. People who could afford to, like the Kemfers or Mr. Hunter who owned Hunter's Arms, donated 50 lots each. So there was a tremendous amount of support. This slogan, Soldier City, went out on the national wires with help from the National Tribune, being a national newspaper, all across the country. And it worked. It didn't ease the pain of the depression, but it brought new blood into the town when it was desperately, desperately needed. All that people who signed up for the program had to do, the lot was free, every person who responded had to pay a $100 deposit, $100 to cover taxes for the next 10 years. Must have been a pretty nice tax rate back then. But the point of this is that, like I said earlier, St. Cloud has been all about our veterans from the very beginning. Soldier City is what we are. It's our legacy, it's our identity, and I would suggest that we return to that. Thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Yes, thank you, Larissa. No, I love everything you do, obviously, with the history of St. Cloud and with the cemetery. I visited that, walked through the stones with you and, Michael Wager was down there?
Yes, Michael Wager.
Yes, Michael. Yeah, there's a few wagers, so I just wanted to make sure I got the right one. Now, that was amazing. Of course, Councilmember Paul was down there talking about the history that she knew in the area, so I appreciate you, thank you very much. We're going to be talking about that more, more as this goes on with the Veterans Council.
I hope you do.
And what we're going to do, I know we're talking about using, utilizing Veterans Park more in the near future, so.
And I hope we do that as well. This is what built the town. This is what, this is why the town exists.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate you. All right, our next section will be the public hearings. City clerk, please. Read number one, public hearing number one.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-51. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Chapter Three Performance and City Standards by amending Article 14 titled Use Regulations, Section 3.14.23 of the Land Development Code and by using city standards for mini warehouse and storage facilities, providing for severability, scrivener's errors, conflict clarification, and effective date. Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This case before you tonight is for the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code for Mini Warehouse and Storage Facilities. At a city council meeting workshop held in March of 2021, staff was directed to create specific architectural standards for the mini warehouses and storage facilities. The proposed Land Development Code amendment proposes to add design standards, update the primary and prohibited uses, add secondary allowable uses, and reorganize the ordinance to consolidate and make this section more comprehensible. At the November 14th, 2024 city council meeting, Councilmember Gilbert motioned to continue this ordinance to the February 13th meeting, which is tonight, to allow more time to review the proposed changes to the current mini warehouse and storage facility standards. In addition to the primary use of storage, we are adding provisions to allow for secondary uses on the ground floor level of the storage facilities. If they have drive-through lanes, then they must be located on the side or rear of the building. And for any secondary uses such as truck rentals, a maximum of two trucks may be parked for display. Facilities shall not be used for residential purposes, storage of any weapons, firearms, or ammo, storage of any illegal substances, or storage of animals. In order to preserve valuable commercial frontage along major roadways in the city, the minimum height of the mini warehouses must be two stories, and the maximum height shall be three stories if it is adjacent to single-family zoned areas. We are proposing to limit the curb cuts to two on any block face with no more than three total for any parcel. We are proposing to require interior access to units that, so that the warehouse doors are not the predominant feature of the building facade, and we are restricting the visibility of the warehouse doors from the street. The required number of design elements will be based on the square footage of the building. And some of the design requirements include the base of the building shall be differentiated from the rest of the facade. All facades shall incorporate no less than two building materials. Building monotony shall be prevented. The color palette shall complement adjacent buildings. Dominant entryway shall reinforce character of the building, and the building facades visible from the right-of-way shall have an appearance of an office or retail building. A few more design requirements, the lighting provided shall accentuate features and provide a safe environment. Allowable materials are defined in the ordinance. Solid blank walls shall be avoided, and minimum transparent material usage is established. Okay? Outdoor storage will be permitted only in the side or rear yards and shall be entirely screened from view of adjacent non-industrial property and public rights-of-way. The screening shall be a six-foot masonry wall at a minimum. Both staff and planning commission recommended approval. Likewise, it is requested that this city council approve ordinance number 2024-51. At this time, staff is available for questions.
All right, thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to address this issue for this item? All right, Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, that was a lot. That was quite a bit. And I know our city's growing, and I know that the storage facilities now are going into the PUD area, not the facility of one story, but as a councilman, that land is so valuable, 192, I don't think there are going to be storage units there, and I can't predict the future, but I think this ordinance should just be passed, passed on, not passed, because I just, there's so many regulations that it's stopping consumers from doing this. And the funny thing about storage is, we as Americans, we get so much stuff, we put it in a storage unit, we don't see it for 10 years, and we just pay our bill. It's the weirdest thing ever. So I would recommend us not going any further with this ordinance and just, how do you say it, canceling it?
Are you recommending all on this ordinance, sir?
I'm just recommending I don't.
You're making a motion to deny? Let's go ahead and listen to Deputy Mayor Fletcher first, sir.
I agree. A lot of the stuff that's covered in this, this ordinance is actually covered in state statute, not all of it. I would second Councilmember Gilbert's motion for denial on this.
All right, we have a motion for denial on ordinance number 2024-51, and a second, a motion from Councilmember Gilbert, a second for denial from Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-85. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing the proposed property known as Lakeside at Satia, referred to, further described herein and recognizing the Lakeside at Satia Community Development District created by Chartered Uniform General Laws and Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter 190, Florida statutes 2001 and thereafter, acknowledging the Uniform District Charter expressed in Section 190.006 through 190.041, Florida statutes and reference is provided by Section 190.004, subsection four, Florida statutes confirmed by Section 189.31, subsection three. Florida statute establishing the district on the property proposed in this petition and designating the initial members of the district board of supervisors and recognizing and designing the powers of the district providing for severability and effective date. Good evening, Melissa Dunkland again, Director of Community Development. The applicant is petitioning to establish a community development district for the project known as Lakeside at Satia. Lakeside at Satia is a PUD that was approved on August 10th, 2023, which was approved for 402 single-family detached homes with vehicular access to Lilian Lee Road and Nora Tyson Road. The Uniform Community Development District Act, Chapter 190 of Florida statutes, permits the creation of community development districts for the provision of community development services and facilities. The purpose of this CDD will be to plan, finance, acquire, construct, operate, and maintain at least the following, which includes sanitary sewer facilities, water distribution systems, reuse water systems, stormwater systems, electrical service systems, conservation mitigation, on- and off-site public roadway improvements, and other infrastructure. The Lakeside at Satia CDD provides enhancements beyond the requirements of the Land Development Code, which include active recreational amenities, open space enhancements and parks, transportation enhancements, roadway maintenance, stormwater, and right-of-way maintenance. Staff recommends approval, and likewise, it is requested that this council approve ordinance number 2024-85, and we are available if you have any questions, and the applicant is also present and available for questions.
All right, would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Good evening, for the record, Kim Reali, 401 East Jackson Street in Tampa. We don't have our presentation prepared. The purpose of the CDD, while there's a long list of items there, and of course, is important for construction, but what this method of quasi-government laundry does is, it allows the roads to get built and maintained without the city having to do that. And so it largely works as a, as a way to finance and maintain stormwater roadways, and then that initial install of sewer water and other utilities. So we do have our team here if there are any questions, but otherwise, we respectfully request your approval.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Fletcher, I'm sorry, Gilbert.
Yeah, I ran into CDDs, and a guy named Mr. Moyer started a mid-celebration in the central Florida area for developments of celebration and also harmony. I, as a council member, look at it as a good thing to less burden the citizens of St. Cloud for some of these things that you'll be taking care of, such as roads and lights and structures and things such as that. The people that live there won't be paying probably a two-tier CDD, one when they move in, and then one gets adjusted each year. Is that correct, sir?
So, yes, there's, not all of the infrastructure will be funded with the CDD, but there's some bonding that does, and the CDD can bond, much like the city does, which is an advantage to using a CDD. And so then there's assessments that get applied to each lot. for some of these things that you'll be taking care of, such as roads and lights and structures and things such as that. The people that live there won't be paying probably a two-tier CDD, one when they move in, and then one gets adjusted each year. Is that correct, sir?
So, yes, there's, not all of the infrastructure will be funded with the CDD, but there's some bonding that does, and the CDD can bond, much like the city does, which is an advantage to using a CDD. And so then there's assessments that get applied to each lot, but then there's also maintenance and, and then annual things that have to be done to maintain stormwater mostly, but also the roadways, you know, in forty years, if those have to get resurfaced, then they could take out bonds again to, to do those repairs so that the city doesn't have to step in and do that. So the mechanism for stormwater and roads is the biggest thing long-term, but in the short term, they build everything, which is really helpful.
And then I understand that, and usually roads have to be resurfaced after seven to ten years, depending on their usage. The second part of a CDD, though, can be adjusted or increased for maintenance purposes. Is that correct, sir?
Right, there's, the annual assessment, there'll be a budget, and there's a board that's actually elected, so the members of the community will elect their representatives on the CDD board. So after the developer finishes construction, there's a turnover process, so that citizens sit on that board, and they will control the budget and control the maintenance. And so the, it's really one assessment, but the assessment will include covering the debt, and then it also includes whatever the, the annual maintenance is.
And one last question. You say the board will be turned over to the citizens that live there. What is the percentage before the builders come in and turn that over to the, to the, to the citizens' board?
So it's often time. I don't have a good answer for that, and we have, Jeremy, if anyone wants to.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you all so much. My name is Jared Earlywine, I'm with QTAC Rock. We represent probably four hundred of the thousand-plus CDDs in Florida, and have been doing it for about twenty-something years. The CDD board actually potentially can turn over earlier than an HOA. If you think of an HOA, it's usually driven by the documents, they turn over at ninety, ninety-five percent build-out. A CDD has elections every two years, and the seats are staggered. There's five seats, and so in a certain year, you might have two or three seats up for election. As soon as fifty percent of the land is transferred, you can actually start having those seats transferred. When you get to year six, though, and you have two hundred and fifty residents living in the community, at that point, they're mandated to start turning it over to residents at that point. So they can turn over earlier, but the drop-dead date is when you get to year six, but they can certainly turn over in any of those even-numbered elections.
Mayor, that's all the questions I yield back. Thank you. City manager, I know, and I had, just this came to mind, this was the one that they were burning on the property. It's not relevant to what's on the agenda here, but weren't we, we're going to come back in the future and talk about a code to talk about that kind of stuff?
Yes.
That will address that, okay.
Yes, so yes, it is the property that, that they were burning, but my understanding is that they have since gone and worked with the gentleman who complained, and I believe it's all resolved. But yes, further, fire chief is working with the city attorney on an ordinance to prevent those situations in the future.
Awesome, yeah. Yeah, I knew you all addressed that. I just knew that we were going to work on something, it just crossed my mind while we were thinking, while talking about it. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And do we have anybody, anyone in the audience like to address this item? All right, any more comments from council? And madam, do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
A motion from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Final public hearing for Ordinance Number twenty-two five dash zero one. An ordinance of the city, the city of St. Cloud, Florida, contracting two, contracting two parcels totaling approximately plus minus three point eighty-six acres, identifies La Salle Avenue located north of Cypress Avenue, east of Henry J. Avenue, and west of La Salle Avenue, owned by Servin Duke and Chantel Born and Cursey Dustin Cole, amending the boundary lines of the municipality to remove the properties from Ordinance Number twenty-two four dash fifty-two due to a scripter's error, providing for servability conflicts publication effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This request before you tonight is for the contraction annexation for the property known as La Salle Avenue. Through a scripter's error, two parcels that did not meet state requirements for voluntary annexation were annexed. This contraction will remove the two parcels from the city limits and return them back to the unincorporated status. The ordinance will remove the two parcels depicted in blue from the city's jurisdiction and return them to unincorporated Osceola County. Staff recommends approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval. Likewise, it is requested that City Council approve Ordinance Number twenty-two five dash zero one. Staff is available for any questions.
So this means it's going back to the county from the city? That's the whole?
That is correct. The legal description was incorrect, and so we inadvertently annexed two properties that should not have been annexed. We, we did not have owner authorization, and so we are returning them back to the county.
How do they feel about that?
I think they're happy.
They got noticed, just, I don't know where they, okay. I mean, eventually, will that area be in the city? That's within the JP.
Eventually.
Okay, all right. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Any council discussion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Final public hearing for Ordinance Number twenty-two five dash oh two. An ordinance of the city of St. Cloud, of the City Council, city of St. Cloud, of Osceola County, Florida, amending City Code Chapter forty-four utilities by amending Section forty-four dash thirty-one, adopting Toho PKG, Water Authority Policies, and adding Section forty-four dash thirty-two, new individual resident and general services, providing for servability conflict administration corrections, codification effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland. This ordinance proposes an amendment to add deleted language and renumber Chapter forty-four of the City Code. Ordinance Number twenty-two two dash fifty-six was adopted at the September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two City Council meeting. The ordinance inadvertently and without intent repealed Section forty-four dash three-nine-two of the City Code, which sets forth the applicant's requirements for compliance prior to provision of water and sewer services. This ordinance puts the language back into the City Code. Staff recommends approval and requests that council approve Ordinance Number twenty-two five dash zero two. Staff is available if you have any questions.
What's the full name of Toho? I want to hear Melissa say it.
Toho Kipalika?
Deputy Mayor Fletcher, I know he knows.
TWA.
All right, anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, any member, councilmembers' comments?
You know, when I make a mistake at work, it doesn't have to get advertised.
She didn't say it, so I wanted to see.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Public hearing for Resolution Number twenty-two five dash zero zero one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting conditional use to operate a private school in the R one B, single-family dwelling zoning district approximately two point forty-six acres of the land known as Christ-Centered Academics, generally located north of east Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, of Old Hickory Tree Road, east of Old Hickory Tree Road, and west of Dean Street, and south of Tenth Street, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland. This case before you is for a conditional use permit request for the project known as Christ-Centered Academics, conditional use. The property is generally located near the intersection of Old Hickory Tree Road and east Earl Bronson Memorial Highway. The future land use is low-density residential, and the zoning is R one B residential. The proposed conditional use is for a private school, and the applicant is proposing to operate Monday through Thursday from eight AM to four PM, and the proposed student capacity is fourteen students, including the grades of one through twelve. At the December twenty, sorry, at the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission, concerns were raised by citizens about traffic due to the operations of the food pantry on site, and the concern was traffic backing up onto one ninety-two and Old Hickory Tree Road. Due to the existing church and the food pantry operating on the site, staff believes that adding the private school would increase the traffic that is already backed up into the city's rights-of-way. They are proposing to operate in an existing modular building located on the bottom right of your screen, highlighted in yellow. Staff does recommend denial of this conditional use. Planning Commission recommended approval with the following conditions. For so long as the, I'm just going to read them for the record. For so long as the permitted, as the use permitted hereunder continues, in the event that stacking or standing of vehicles encroaches into the public right-of-way or otherwise interferes with the flow of vehicular traffic as determined by the city, this resolution may be brought back before the City Council for review and consideration of additional conditions to address traffic issues or possible revocation of the rights granted hereunder in perpetuity. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan or any additional approvals required by the Land Development Code, and the final condition is this approval is for this school, Christ-Centered Academics only. Upon the school leaving the subject property, the conditional use shall expire. Staff recommends denial of Resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero one based on the factual matters in Section one point three point three point three B of the Land Development Code, and request that City Council also deny Residence, Resolution Number twenty-two five dash zero 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 one R. Staff is available for questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Okay, thank you. Before the applicant, I want to recognize Councilmember Gilbert first.
Yeah, I'll need to recuse myself from this.
Thank you, sir. All right, would the applicant like to speak on this item? Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry. Good evening, my name's Lynette Moore. I live at six-three-seven-five Carroll Circle, St. Cloud, Florida, three-four-seven-seven-one. I'm the principal of the school. It's a very small school, there's only thirteen children enrolled. We have three staff members. All of the children are exceptional students who really don't do well in the regular public school system. They're all on scholarships from the government. Most of them, it used to be called the McKay, now it's called the UE Scholarship for Unique Abilities. Like I say, very, very small school. The car situation of the food pantry has been resolved. The church has altered its organization, and there are no more vehicles stacking anywhere. Cars coming, park on the parking lot, get their food and then leave, and there's not been any stacking of traffic for at least a month since the last meeting that we were in, when the pastor himself asked for an extension so that they could solve that problem. The staff have three cars, and I think there's a grand total of five cars that bring children to school, because one family is actually three families, but one car brings all three families and picks them up. So, and we have several families where it's two or three children from that particular family, so we don't have a lot of cars involved with the school. And I think that's about it, really, unless you have any questions.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
I just had two questions. First, first of all, thank you for everything that you do in the community. I know with the, the food pantry, you work with several different organizations in the community, hand in hand to, to serve those in need, and I appreciate all your efforts and, and the pastor and everybody out there, so thank you. Second, I'm sorry, first, in one of the conditions, and this is a question for the, the city attorney, it used the word perpetuity as in forever, but they, if they had an issue, they could come back in the future on that property and ask for a new conditional use or something, like it just wouldn't last forever.
Well, it does become, it does last forever, except for as the conditions that are set forth in here, so you can restrict it if, if you want to, but otherwise, it becomes basically the zoning for the property until it's changed.
Okay. And then my other question was, the, the school pickup is not going to be at the same time as the?
No. No. School drop-off is at eight, and the pantry doesn't open until nine, and school pickup is at four, and the pantry is finished before noon.
Okay, so, so with that, I know there's going to be maybe a discussion. I would recommend approval with staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff's recommendation was denial.
I'm sorry, with the staff, with the conditions that are listed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is a motion. Should we hear public comment first, or do we have to take the mo, the item, the motion on the table?
Well, you can't, before you take vote, you should have it, so you can get a second for the motion, or?
We have a second for the motion? All right, we're going to go and open it back up for public comment. We have Draven Moore. Should I state on the record, motion dies for lack of second?
That, yeah, well, that, that, that motion does, yeah.
Okay.
My name is Draven Moore. I live at thirty-eight fifty-five Santa Cedro Circle, three-four-seven-seven-two. Good evening, Mayor Robertson and City Council. I appreciate you allowing me the time to speak, and I'm here to talk about why I don't think Christ-Centered academics should be opened in St. Cloud, Florida. I know city staff has recommended denial, but I wanted you to hear my story. I went to Christ-Centered academics in twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, and there were a lot of things that were, really bothered me while I was there. A lot of kids I went to school with had challenges, and they probably can't speak up about it, so I feel like I have to say something for them. So the main problems were that the teacher was very unfair and mean, and this was also the director, Mrs. Moore. She didn't allow anyone to question her. If you did, she'd punish you by making you sit outside the room or moving your seat to isolate you. Her grandson was spanked in front of everyone in class watching. That was upsetting and embarrassing for him and for the rest of us. The unsafe behavior from other students. There was a student who touched other kids inappropriately, but Mrs. Moore didn't really do anything about it. She just made him sit alone, but that then solved the problem and made the rest of us feel unsafe. The classroom windows were nailed shut, so if there was ever a fire, we wouldn't have a way to get out. The younger kids were put in the back of the house where there wasn't even an exit they could use in an emergency. There were almost twenty kids at the school, but there was only one bathroom for all of us to share. The staff didn't wash their hands or wear gloves when handling food. This was really gross and made me worried about getting sick. I hope you take these things seriously, because kids deserve a safe, fair place to learn. What I saw and experienced at the school wasn't safe or fair, and I don't think it's a good idea to let them open a location here in St. Cloud, Florida. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, Mayor Fletcher, if you have something to say. Oh, my lady was just on.
Thank you.
Next we have, sorry, next we have Luke Anthony. Hey, may I please have your name and address for the record, please?
Luke Anthony, twelve fifteen Old Hickory Tree Road, with the altered church, and the pastor there. Been there about six months now. I want to thank you all, councilmembers, city manager, for giving us the time to work this out. You know, this is our, our community, we take community in our church, we're named very seriously. Like, it's important to us. I've been in St. Cloud since nineteen eighty-five, grew up here, you know, when it was a one-lane road, and, and it's near and dear to my heart that we have. and, and it's near and dear to my heart that we have everything we need to meet the needs of our community. And I want to apologize for the traffic situation, for taking up your valuable time and, and being part of that. We didn't realize the, the problem that was causing it really. I mean, we were just getting into it and involving it and the pantry went to the drive-through during COVID just so that it could continue to meet the needs of the community when we were social distancing and spreading out. So it just being a continuation of that had just been what we'd always done. So finding out these issues and situations coming up to your city council really, you know, disturbed us that we weren't being good neighbors, that we were impacting businesses around us and creating unsafe conditions and stuff like that in our community, which is the opposite of what we're trying to do. So I apologize for that and, and we're, we're here to do better. On January 15th, we went from being a drive-through pantry to a walk-up pantry where people park and they walk inside and they register and they're talked with and we're opening up meetings with other 501(c)(3)'s and other agencies that can help them and be there at that check-in time to say, hey, do you need help with your insurance? Do you need help with other things in your, in your life? So this has been a real blessing in disguise that we've gotten to, to change to a, a walk-up pantry now and alleviate no more stacking cars, no more standing cars, no more cars on 192. It's all been super amazing to get to be face-to-face with people and have that, that personal connection that we were lacking there. So it was really exciting to, to be able to do that with our community. But, you know, the pantry, people are desperate. They were, they were lined up for hours before we started, you know, and that's why that line was being there. But then being desperate for food, there's also other needs that we want to, to meet in our community like the, the school. You know, that's a vital part of community is having a safe place or, you know, educational place for those with special needs to be. And that's part of our heart, is to be able to reach every layer of community. We have, you know, from school to pantry to Narcotics Anonymous that meet on our property that we, we want to touch every, every heart in this community is what we want to be involved in. And I thank you guys for partnering us. Thank you for everything you guys do for this community. I'm super proud to be part of St. Cloud for 38 years now. You know, I remember it was small, but I don't, I'm not one of the ones that look at it and go, man, I miss back. No, I love what we've become and the, the change in the community and the growth in the community is amazing. Thank you, Chief, for making us the safest city in Florida. So thank you all and God bless you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Name and address for the, the record, sir.
James Moore, 3855 San Asidro Circle. My son is Draven, who Captain spoke earlier. And I appreciate that he had the courage to come and speak to you guys. I just want to also share some facts that I know that is a matter of public record. So Draven was a student at that school, removed him due to the situations that we encountered there. But I also want to bring to the record that twice the school has been shut down by the city for not following the proper code. They were shut down initially, had requested to, the house that was on Vermont Ave was denied. City Fire Inspector, I believe it was Chief Miller, denied them. The house was not set up. They still operate that school in that house. They were told they needed to close down. They went and opened up another development over on, I can't remember the name of the street, advertising as a tutoring center, but that was not what it was used for. It was used as a schooling system, so once again they were shut down. So I appreciate that she went to the school. I appreciate what she does for unique educational students, but there's a history of not following the rules, doing what they want to do. While my student, my son was a student there, they were in a classroom with the windows were nailed shut. He tested on it shortly, but kids were in the back of the house where if there was a fire, these young kids were going to perish due to the lack of concerns. There was no sprinklers. So a lot of stuff that needs to be done was not done and she just operated it in a, in a manner that's not representing the city of St. Cloud. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, I have a few comments on this. One, I, I have seen the stacking issue in the past along 192 and that did concern me, of course. That's not really applicable to the school, but it does indicate that there's an issue with, with cars being able to, to park on that property improperly. I would like to make a motion to move this item to the next meeting. I would like to gather more information. I, I want to see your plan. Pastor Anthony, I know you've emailed me and we communicated briefly. I would like to come out there and you show me and staff and maybe other council members individually what you've done to alleviate that, that issue. I would also like to ask the city manager if the fire department, if there are issues with some of the structures not being properly, you know, the, the, if it's fire extingu, suppression systems, if it's windows nailed shut, any of those issues that were brought up tonight? I don't know if those are factual, but I, I would like to address those if we can.
Yes, we can inspect the property. I believe they were talking about a previous location. They're not allowed to operate there currently, so I would assume that there's no students there now.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to clear all, anything that's been addressed here tonight and I appreciate you coming up and speaking. We have Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, I, I would agree with continuing to do some, some more research on this. By, I, full disclosure, I did go meet with the pastor on site. I have utmost respect for faith-based education and, and what churches like this do for the community. I also have heard the concerns that were spoken about tonight and I just want to make sure, I, I would assume if it's a charter school, it has all of the state certifications and fire certification, safety is definitely top priority as well. So I just would like to, to look into this a little more and also ensure that that stacking issue isn't, isn't happening anymore on, on Hickory Tree Road because that, that is a safety issue as well.
Yeah. Councilmember Paul.
I agree as what Councilmember Urban and the mayor has suggested continuing it. And I also would like to say thank you for being a resource to the community, to those that are in need. Thank you for all that you do.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
I just want to say for the record, I was unaware of, of the items that were spoken about this evening. And then as far as the food distribution and stuff, I do want to, you know, continue to say thank you. I would support a continuance, but I did want to go on the record and say that the issues that were brought up this evening, I was unaware of when making my motion. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we just need to continue it to the March 13th meeting? Yes, sir. Yep, we have a motion to continue it to March 13th. Second. We have a motion, a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, please read, uh, read the next item.
Public hearing for Resolution Number 2025-013R. A resolution of the City of St. Cloud, Florida granting conditional use to operate a storage facility in Stevens Plantation Corporate Campus PUD zoning district on approximately 2.2 acres planned known as Cloud Storage, generally located north of Nolte Road and east of Pine Chase Circle and west of Progress Lane, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin again. This case before you tonight is for a conditional use permanent request for the project known as Cloud Storage. The property is generally located at the northwestern end of the Progress Lane cul-de-sac. The future land use is low-density residential and the zoning is Stevens Plantation PUD. The applicant is proposing to have a storage facility with a three-story climate-controlled interior storage units, perimeter drive aisle and fenced in with security gates. Here's the map that shows the zoning as PUD. Here's the map that shows the land use as low-density residential. And this graphic shows the circulation for garbage pickup. Here's a graphic representation of the proposed structure. Here's the proposed south elevation. This is the proposed east elevation. Staff is recommending approval with seven conditions, so please bear with me while I read them for the record. The approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan as a site plan. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan and any additional approvals required by the land development code. Vehicles for hire are not permitted at this location. A six-foot masonry wall shall be required along the western boundary property line located in such a way that the existing trees remain intact and healthy. A minimum of four design elements must be provided. Access to the individual storage units shall not be visible from the street unless located behind windows and may be only accessed from interior spaces of the building. Direct use of the access to the individual storage units shall be, shall extend a minimum of three feet behind the window. Building facades shall have the appearance of an office building using appropriate building and design elements. Buildings constructed on a corner shall place the dominant entry on the corner at a diagonal. The use of a curvilinear element for this entryway is strongly encouraged. A dominant entryway shall be constructed to reinforce the character of the building, add visual interest, break up the monotony of flat surfaces, add a vertical element to break up the facade of the building to, and create an inviting entrance by using distinctive architectural elements, materials and special lighting. Staff recommends approval. Planning Commission did recommend approval with the first two conditions. Staff added conditions three through seven after planning commission and we are requesting that city council approve Resolution Number 2025-013R with the conditions as stated by staff today. And I'm available if you have any questions. I believe the applicant is also present.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor. Excuse me, Mayor and Council. Don Huey with Ask Huey, 25 East 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida. First, I'd like to ask, I was a little confused earlier because it relates to this item. Was ordinance 20 dash, 2024-51, was that denied this evening? It sounded as though it was.
Yes, it was. It was denied.
Okay. That being said, with an approval tonight, I would like to remove the conditions three through seven because they seem to coincide with that denial this evening.
Staff, would you like to address this? Melissa?
Yes, so since staff was not sure if council would approve the ordinance that was in fact denied, we did add these special conditions of approval because the zoning here is for a PUD. So the zoning was intended to create a specific place where they had enhanced and architectural features and, and uses that are very in character with that area. So we feel that this type of use is appropriate, but it needs to be done with enhanced architectural standards and not taking too much of the land that we have reserved for the corporate campus so that, that does require them to build a more compact building at a, at higher stories, which we believe is in character with that area.
So you're saying you want to keep the conditions on there?
Correct, please.
Thank you.
You want, you want to put the conditions back up on the screen?
So if you want me to explain the conditions just a little bit or no?
Mr. Huey, that's three, four and five?
And.
Six and seven.
Six.
All of, three through seven, okay. All right, I'm going to open up for public comment. Now we have Dwayne Norman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. Dwayne Norman, 35, I'm already getting my time, 3551 Buckingham Court. So I'll try to talk fast and I know a few of you know, I live right across the street there. I know you know, this is not how the corporate campus was sold to us, that built 18 years ago in Stevens Plantation in the estates. Okay? So originally this was sold as a corporate campus slash medical offices, you know, the original strip malls that have some dentists and some physical therapy and things. That was exactly what we had envisioned. We ended up with apartments, which thank you God for letting y'all buy the old school, which was going to be four-story apartments. So thank you very much for doing that. But this is definitely not what that area is meant to be. Okay? The city might need storage, but that area is not made for storage units. The poor people that are just to the west, I don't know if you can put the map back up on me? They're going to have a three-story or they're going to have a storage unit in their backyard and I guarantee you some of those people probably lived there for decades. But this is not how the corporate campus was sold to the citizens of St. Cloud or the residents of Stevens Plantation. I take offense to the staff approving and think this is a good idea for this area. It is land use designation of low-density residential. I think that's how it should stay. I don't think we should put many storages there. And the conditional use is consistent with the general pattern of development in the area. I don't see that. I don't understand that. I don't see any, and just on that map there, you don't see any many storages in that area, you know? You don't see any many storages till you get out on Canoe Creek Road or maybe Old Canoe Creek Road. But in this residential neighborhood that was supposed to have a corporate campus, it was never by the designers intended for storage units. So I would definitely beg you to deny storage units going on that parcel, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And would anyone else in the audience like to address this item? All right, Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
So when I seen this come across my desk, it said Cloud Storage. I thought it was actual cloud servers. I was like, whoa, this is, this would be a great project, Stevens Plantation. But unfortunately, you know, after, you know, hearing the comments and, and thinking about it a little bit more, you know, being right up against those residents, I know you got the, the six-foot wall and, and all of this, but I don't know. Those are my comments, which isn't much.
All right, and Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, so, yeah.
One second, Don. Go ahead, Councilmember.
My, my thoughts, you know, are, I know probably Dan could speak to this a lot more, but I know the original intentions for the corporate campus were to have higher wage jobs and bringing into our city. And, and you know, it's, if this were to be approved, I would want to keep the conditions. I think we denied the ordinance earlier because we intend for things in the future to come forward as PUDs so they can be customized and, and have conditions like this anyway. So it wasn't a denial saying we want to get rid of all standards, but it was for that. But I just, for me personally, I'd make a motion for denial based on finding one is this conditional use consistent with the general pattern and land development within the zoning district. And I don't believe it is, so that would be my motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the table for denial from Councilmember Urban. And we have a second from Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, and next we have council action. Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Resolution Number 2024-203R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida entering into an agreement with Osceola County and Wayley's Farm LLC for the design engineering fees, actual construction costs and conveyance of right-of-ways for the framework roads within the adjacent, within and adjacent to Belleterra property boundaries for mobility fee credits authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin again. This case before you tonight is for the Belleterra tri-party agreement. Little background, in the approved concept plan, Kissimmee Park Road, South Berry Drive, Cecil Wayley Road were identified as framework streets and are essential to the. Cecil Wayley Road were identified as framework streets and are essential to the improvement of the transportation network in this area. This agreement will reimburse the cost of the design permitting construction cost right-of-way for the onsite and offsite improvements of the framework streets through mobility fee credits only for the additional mobility capacity over what is required to serve the project. The estimated amount for reimbursement is up to $20 million of the actual costs only. The developer must provide proof of the actual cost prior to any reimbursements. Here's a graphic representation of the portions of the framework streets that Belatera is constructing. They're highlighted in yellow. You'll see a section of Kissimmee Park Road going east-west, South Berry Drive going north-south, and then a small section of Cecil Wayley Road going east-west. Staff recommends approval and is requesting that City Council also approve Resolution Number 2024-203R. And staff is available if you have any questions. And I believe the applicant is present as well.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm on behalf of Wayley Farms. Appreciate your time tonight. Appreciate staff's presentation as well. We've been working closely with them through this process. And do you have to answer any questions that you have? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. And would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? And do we have any council discussion? All right, well, I would like to say, of course, I had some reservations about this. And the developers, we had a workshop, I'd like to tell the audience, we had a workshop, we went through this for hours. I don't like the deal. I don't like the deals that are put in place to give away tons, millions and millions of mobility fees back without us getting anything over here on this side of the turnpike. But these developers, these folks, they did come back to the table. They were at the workshop. I do appreciate that. Tom, Kevin, Craig, thank you very much for stepping up. And after speaking with them for hours, they were gracious enough to say that four and a half million dollars worth of mobility fees will be paid, and they would only take up to $20 million worth of mobility fees. That's correct? Tom, would you like to come back up here and answer some questions?
Yeah, that's what's contained in the agreement. It's capped at $20 million in mobility fee credits.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Awesome, thank you. Okay. And Craig, can you come up here for a second, please? Yeah, and I spoke, Craig, your name and address.
Craig Perry, Cleveland, Florida, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Yeah. Yeah, and Craig, you know, we spoke today and we spoke, you know, a few weeks ago, we all sat down and I do understand your concerns. And I know you haven't really, it's kind of gone back and forth between Osceola County and St. Cloud and between our two water utilities, and you've kind of been put through the wringer on a lot of this. So I appreciate you kind of hanging in there. And I know you did say you'd love to invest more in our city. I'd ask not as much single-family residential, but maybe if you want to come and invest in our downtown, we'd love to have you do some things that really add to our downtown because I know we're really trying to improve this. So we'll keep it to this item, but thank you for stepping up and, you know, everything we addressed, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Yes, thank you. I had the opportunity to meet with folks as well. We had a lengthy conversation about mobility fees and what we're going to get from them and understand more of how the mobility fees are calculated. Definitely, there's two different ways to calculate mobility fees. One, by engineer's cost estimate versus FDOT standards. The estimates that we put into place or the initial agreement was for about $24 million and then providing a cost estimate. We wouldn't pay, we wouldn't pay out all the way up to the 24 million. It's based on what the actual cost, I believe. Right, Melissa, if you could explain that a little bit in detail for me?
Right, that's correct. So the mobility fee agreement was based on FDOT dollars because it does cost government more money to build roads than it does the developers. So it's capped at the 20 million. But if they, for example, if it only costs them $15 million and they're able to provide proof that that was their actual cost, then we will only reimburse up to that amount, not the full amount. They have to demonstrate their actual cost and we only reimburse up to that amount.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much and thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. Like the mayor had said, if you want to invest in our downtown, come on. We appreciate the investment in the city.
Can you go for 15 million? Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah, just one question, I guess this is to our city attorney. There are laws and statutes in place that we can only do the actual cost to reimburse them, correct?
They are entitled to the actual costs in mobility fee credits under the law.
If there's an overrun in that cost, is that for the developer to absorb that?
They have agreed essentially to, there's a provision in the statute that was put in a couple of years ago that requires in these type of agreements, the developer to obtain their actual costs. But they have, however, they agreed to cap it and they've agreed to basically waive that provision in the statute.
Thank you very much for your explanation. I yield back. Thank you. All right, and can we get a motion on this item? Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion approved from Deputy Mayor Fletcher, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Discussion of possible action regarding the common parking request for One Pickleball LLC located at 1790 East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, St. Cloud, Florida 34771.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin. This case before you is for a common parking request for the project known as One Pickleball. The property is generally located at the intersection of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and Jaffa Drive. The applicant is proposing to install 10 new parking spaces in the rear and share four non-exclusive spaces in front of the building. The pickleball clients will be by appointment only and a mini-site plan will be required to add the additional parking spaces. Here's a graphic representation of the 10 additional parking spaces drawn in green behind the existing building. The four non-exclusive parking spaces will be in the front of the building. Staff recommends approval and requests that council also approve their request for this common parking. And I'm available for questions. And I believe the applicant is here as well.
All right, thank you, Melissa. And would the applicant like to speak on this item? I would like the applicant to come and speak on this item. Name and address for the register.
How you doing, Chris? I leased the warehouse portion of my building, one of the buildings, to a pickleball company. There's only four courts. It's by appointment only. It's a private club. There's a lot of interest in it, so there's a lot of people there. But I noticed it has died down and she is correct, it doesn't get too bad. I have, the main building is empty right now, so I'm looking to lease it. I've got 27 parking spaces dedicated to that spot, and then we've got other parking. I think I have 17 parking spaces for Vitas. So there's plenty of parking, but, I mean, it's, I didn't think it was going to be that big of a deal and so, but, you know, we want to do this right, so we're.
You want to stand up here, stay up here for questions? We have the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, I just wanted to state that by approving this agreement, we are ensuring that there is parking dedicated for the front that used to be Babcock Retail that is currently vacant. Without this, staff would not be able to approve another retail use going in that front building. So this is ensuring that there is dedicated parking assigned for the pickleball use, the Vitas, and the new renter in the future of that currently vacant space. So that is why staff recommends approval.
Thank you. And Councilmember Gilbert?
Well, this is interesting, and again, pickleball has taken a big step forward and I see cities like Ocala and others, and it's designated large facilities for pickleball with restaurants in them and everything like that. You said there's four courts, so that's 16 total people at the designated time. You also said there's 27 parking spots for the Babcock that would be usage. I would just want to ask you if you can put in that lease and in your future leases that those parking spots are on a first-come, first-serve basis, so the new leaser doesn't come back to us and say, we don't have those parking spots for that facility. If there could be something drawn up, and I don't know how, I'm not a lawyer, we have one over there, but something that that space, the other additional parking is available, if there's another renter to come in, that they would have to be aware of that space being multi-use, I would have to say. And I yield back to you, Mayor.
It's in the lease. It's in their lease that they only have.
Those back the lot, so it's a great one, it's hashed out in the agreement. Okay. All right, I would like to say, I've known Mr. Hendricks for many years. He actually used to have a business downtown St. Cloud here where Fred's Auction is, not Fred's, Five Points Auction is now.
It was Fred's.
And twenty years ago, you built.
Long time ago.
Right after the hurricane. Actually, you survived, you went through the hurricane here.
Been through a lot here.
Had the Babcock store for many years, great member of the community. I love you got Vitas right there, that helps veterans. It's a veteran service organization. I don't know anything about pickleball, but I know Mr. Hendricks loves to play pickleball. So would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, and can we get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved from Deputy Mayor Fletcher and a second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Mayor, appreciate you. All right, and Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Discussion of possible action regarding pending legislation.
And Mayor, I think I'm going to report to you on this today, tonight. As you know, the legislative session starts on March 4th. It'll be a 60-day session, and so this is your last meeting before that session starts. Annually, we try to identify for the council, we try to focus on those potential legislative issues that are pending that have the most impact on St. Cloud. And we identify them as possible ones that the city council would either want to oppose or support. The typical process is with the direction of the city council, a letter will be prepared and the mayor will send the letter to the, usually the Speaker of the House, the President, Senate President, the governor, and to the local legislative delegation. So I want to go through those items. You have in front of you, and it's up on the screen, two pages. The first page identifies three pending bills that we are recommending that the city council consider sending a letter of opposition to. The first is Senate Bill 184, which is defined as unaffordable housing. What is unique about this bill is that it is, essentially requires local governments allow accessory dwelling units in basically every area zoned for single-family residents. Not necessarily a bad thing, but again, it's one of these bills that the legislature have been visiting and imposing upon the cities in the last several years where it eliminates some of the home rule authority that the city has. Most particular about this bill is that it allows for or prohibits a local government from requiring any special parking requirements related to these accessory dwelling units. I don't necessarily, in every instance, in our view, and we've talked to planning staff about this as it relates to the accessory dwelling units that the city council allowed here recently, parking is potentially an issue that could be, could impact the community. So we feel this bill is a problem for cities because it would not allow the city to regulate that type of problem, that type of parking. So that's one of the reasons why we're recommending a letter be sent in that. There also is HJR 357, which is a House Joint Resolution, which is essentially to put on the ballot in November of 2026, a constitutional amendment that would allow for a $100,000 tax exemption on property within, in the state. That tax exemption would apply to a property whether it's homestead exempt or non-homestead exempt. So it would be in addition to, for homesteaded properties, it would be in addition to the current minimum $50,000 tax exemption that's out there for property values as well as all the other tax exemptions that are put in place. We think that the, you know, that is of course problematic because that can have a significant impact on the county and the city's ad valorem taxation to deal with it. It's important that this be, frankly, it's important that if the city council agrees that the letter of opposition be sent at this point. I think it's pretty fair to say that if it gets on the ballot, it's probably going to get approved. And so the idea would be to express to legislation, legislature that this is not good for. In the past, when they've had these higher tax exemptions, we've essentially sent a letter and drafted a letter that the mayor would send, and it basically would point out the problems that the city would have to face having a reduced tax income because of this and the unavailability of other funding options to do that. Or, you know, one of the other options is it would, if it's a significant impact, which we would think this would be a significant impact, and Mrs. Miller and I can talk to the finance director, try to get a feel for what we're talking about in terms of dollars, but it would force this city council to have to seek alternative methods of generating revenue to pay for some of the everyday services that you provide like police and fire protection that aren't covered by, you know, impact fees. So we do think it could open up a can of worms for you. The other bill that we're recommending that the city council consider filing a letter in opposition to is the sovereign immunity limits. They are currently $200,000 and $300,000 per incident. This bill would raise those to $1 million and $3 million per incident for claims arising after October 1st of 2025. Essentially, that's the cap on the amount of liability that the city counts, that the city has with regard to negligence matters. It's very important, that's a very important cap as it relates to your liability insurance as the city has to pay premiums on every year. That the pool insurance company that the city uses relies heavily on those to keep the premium cost down, so it could be, again, very detrimental to doing that. This is a bill that has been, these bills have been, sovereign immunity bills have been on the legislature's agenda every year, I think for the last five or six years. About six years ago, it went from 100, 300, 100, 200,000 to 200, 300,000. And so when it didn't pass the legislature last year, we kind of knew it was going to come back this year, so it's back. And we would again send a similar letter that we sent last year, which was, this will have another unintended financial consequence on the city having to deal with it. So those are the three that we are asking for direction to prepare letters for the mayor to sign and provide to the legislatures ahead of the pending legislative session. Any questions on those or any thoughts on those?
Yeah, we have Councilmember Urban.
I would just say, I'm 100% two and three, I would agree we should write letters of opposition. As far as the accessory dwelling units go, I think that is a great tool for affordable housing and I think it allows families, grandparents, children to stay together and wouldn't necessarily be a hill I'm willing to die on for that. If it's something about, you know, defending home rule and letting us like create our own standards at the city, I do understand that and I see where we're coming from, but that would just, that would be my comment on that. Otherwise, I'm all for the other ones.
And let me ask you this, city attorney, is that, that just says it allows it, but we're saying we allow it already?
You already allow it.
Okay, so we are protected.
Again, to be clear, my issue with this particular bill is the fact that it's restricting how the city can create its regulations for accessory dwelling units. I personally, being a city attorney, I think that should be a local government decision based on your community and how you do this and where you want to, where you do it. You know, the parking area, parking issues related to accessory dwelling units may be a different issue in the old grid. You know, the parking area, parking issues related to accessory dwelling units may be a different, a different issue in the old grid area where streets, homes tend to be closer together, the streets tend to be a little narrower. That can, that might be a different issue as to where somewhere else in the city that you might be able to put an accessory dwelling unit, but there might be a bigger piece of property that allows for more parking. So the city should be able to address that issue. That's, that's my real concern. Not, not that, I think planning will tell you, they think accessory dwelling units are a good, are a good method to address, you know, affordable housing and provide situations, you know?
So this, this is, puts burden on us, right?
Well, it takes away your authority.
Yeah.
Takes away some of your authority.
I assume, sorry, Councilmember Urban, what we do now, that's, you're good with what we do now for accessory structures.
Yeah.
You still want something that'll take away from what we're doing now, right?
Yeah. And if it's a matter of defending home rule and, and city's authority, I'm all for that, so.
Okay. I think we've got enough direction on that for those three items. So the next page, if you flip to that, this is ones that we, we think the city council should consider sending formal letters of support. The first is House Bill 401, which is, I was talking to Mr. Fletcher about it beforehand. I'm trying to remember the name that they're calling this. It's called the Support Ownership in Florida, Support Home Ownership in Florida Act is what, is what this is actually called. And what the intent of this is, as I understand it, is to allow for municipalities and counties to create certain zoning districts specifically related to what's been referred to as build-to-rent subdivisions. For those of you who were on the council, when the city council got its first build-to-rent project came in, you heard planning departments say, we know this is going to be rental, but under our, but under the code and under the law, we can only treat these as single-family residences. What this bill does, it allows the, it would allow them, the city, to create a special category, which would be for single-family hybrid houses, which are called basically, what they basically are, are rental, single-family resident units that are owned by corporate entities. And it identifies that as being a, a corporate entity that owns three or more, or more than three of these units. So this wouldn't affect an individual property owner that owns maybe two rental homes within the city or one rental and wouldn't have anything to do with them. But what this bill does, it'll, it allows for the city to create that, that zoning category so that these projects can be looked at a little differently, maybe put different restrictions on it. It even allows for the city to go ahead and potentially prohibit those, those type of developments if it want, if it needs to. So we think it's a, we think it's a good bill because it gives the city the option to maybe do that depending on what, what the city wants. And that's why we think it's a good idea to support it. Any questions on that one? The next item that we're, we're asking that you consider supporting is there, there is a provision in the, in House Bill 363, which deals with CRAs and community redevelopment plans. It essentially expands the uses for CRA funds to allow it to do certain things like support services for businesses, payment of short-term rent, professional training, workforce recruitment and retention, even loans and program development. So it expands the potential use. I don't say you have to, but it expands potential use for CRAs. So again, this we think creates additional options for the, for the CRA.
Does it set a threshold of how much?
It says 20, it's 20% of the tax increment. So basically, we, we would interpret that to be 20% of the funds that the city receives into the, that the CRA receives into its, into its fund to be, could be used for those purposes. That's the cap. And again, this is another option one. It doesn't have to be done, but it does create options.
Is, is the cap, okay. Is it based on the, the, what's the, the fund balance or?
I think, I think typically these, these type of fundings are done on an annual basis. So it'll be based on the annual amount that is, that goes into the CRA fund.
Okay. And then you, when we do a budget for that, for the CRA?
You were doing a allocation budget. You would do that. So it'll be part of, exactly.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So the final one we want, we're asking for a form, a letter of support is Senate Bill 226, which expands, well, exactly makes it a state prohibition on smoking in public places. What's important to this is it includes and brings into certain open areas, most particularly within the city, like parks and streets and areas where the state would basically come, would basically prohibit smoking at, at all levels. We've talked to the Parks and Recreation Director here in the city, and, and they think it's a, this is a good, a good thing to keep the parks essentially smoke-free. The bill makes it a state prohibition, which means that the state would come in and enforce it through, mostly through the Division of Tobacco and Firearms, I think would be the ones that would be doing it. But, and it does define public place as basically any place that the public has access to, I mean, streets, sidewalks, public parks, beaches, and even government buildings. So it would apply to that. This bill also adds to the traditional list of smoking, which has expanded. It used to be just cigarettes, then it went to vaping, and this adds, this actually adds cannabis and marijuana as, as it would be to smoke those in public areas, deal with that. Of interest, it doesn't include cigars. So.
Is that, so it doesn't penalize those type of businesses because there are like cigar type?
There are designated, exactly right. There's designated cigar bars that, you know, that.
There are no cigarette bars, I guess. Like you're just, you can try different flavors of cigarettes.
Haven't, haven't seen one of those in about 30 years. So that's what, so those are the three bills that we're recommending that they, that, that the city council authorized the mayor to sell, to send formal letters of support. We would prepare letters, obviously, we'd provide it to the mayor for the mayor's review before he signs them and sends them off. We have found out historically, and a few years ago, the city was given a home rule champion certificate from the League of Cities because we, we did things like this. We, we sent letters out basically protecting home rule. The earlier you do it, the better. We will, again, as I said earlier, we would provide it to the President of the Senate, the House, Speaker of the House, the Governor, and also to the entire leg, local legislative delegation. So they would be familiar with it. So that's it. And so with direction on that, the, we'll, we'll send those letters. Mrs. Miller was diving into her button.
To remind them.
To remind me that she did want me to point out, so there is pending local, a local bill related to the waterline development to create a, basically a legislative, a legislatively created special district. And essentially what that would take all the waterline property and put it into a special district similar to a community development district. However, it would basically be a community development district on steroids, for lack of a better expression. So the whole entire development would be able to have the same sort of funding abilities, bonding abilities, construction of, of infrastructure similar to, to what a smaller community development district would entail, would be able to do. We've looked at the special, the local legislation. We can, our initial review, and we've looked at it pretty closely. It does not prohibit, it doesn't really have an impact on the things that the city of St. Cloud may be interested in looking at, i.e. whether that property is ultimately in the city or not in the city from an annexation perspective. There isn't anything that would prohibit that from happening down the road. But they would be able to get some, some better funding options, which is why I think they want to do. This is a newer sort of, let's specially create a legislative act that's been happening recently. There's some, there's a couple of these around, around the state that they've been creating. And they're usually these larger pieces of property that are in unincorporated parts of the county. So we're just going to monitor that and we can get you copies of the special, the local legislation if you want to see it. And it's about 123 pages. So we can, we can get that for you and just, we're just going to kind of keep an eye on it for now.
Is Sunbridge, that, is that the kind, same process that Sunbridge is?
No, this is a little different than what Sunbridge is. This is more, this is a, Sunbridge, they created sort of like a, you know, the TIF program where they're going to basically have an agreement where they use the tax increment financing thing to help pay for some of their infrastructure. This is a little different. It's, it's more of a larger scale. I don't know if anybody have been in Southwest Florida. There's an area called Lakewood Ranch, if you've heard of that area. That's one of the bigger ones that was created in this sense. So, you know, it's, it's probably best described as the new, the newer iteration of what happened when Disney created the Reedy, the Reedy Creek area.
Just curious, who sponsored that bill for the waterline?
As far as I know, it, it was a request that was made to the local legislative delegation. It went in front of the delegation in January and they approved. A local bill like this has to have approval by the majority of the local legislative delegation. I'm sorry.
It's got a House sponsor and a Senate sponsor?
Oh, yeah, that's right. It was Representative Booth that, that did sponsor it.
Okay. And Senator Eric Teney, I guess, is the Senate sponsor on or?
I don't, I don't know. I do, I do have a, you know, Erica.
But you're saying it doesn't affect us in the future of whether or not we annex?
We looked at it and we talked to the attorneys that have drafted it. And there's, it was not intended to divest the city of St. Cloud of any of its rights related to the future of this project. It frankly would create, similar to what we were talking about with the Community Development District earlier, a situation where they would basically be paying for most of their, for just about all of their infrastructure. The only thing it doesn't allow for is, it doesn't allow for the public safety piece. In other words, they can't have their own police force or fire department.
Well, we have the best in the state anyway, so.
So with that, we'll prepare those letters.
In the country, I'm sorry. In, in the world.
In the world.
Team America.
All right. That's all I have. If there's any questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I think we've got enough direction.
Can we get a motion to approve the letter, the formal letter of opposition and the formal letter of support?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And just one final comment. I know most of you, you'll receive information from certain people about bills as they're moving forward. There's a lot of stuff that's out there that is of interest. We only wanted to focus on those that we thought were most particular. But if you hear about anything else you have any questions about, please contact us. We can put you in touch with the city's lobbyists. Obviously, you can contact the city's lobbyists if you want to know anything about it and deal with that. And if, and if, and if something needs to come up, we can probably, you know, address it before the end of the session if we have to, at your margin. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Discussion on possible action regarding appointments to boards and committees with, with vacancies for the Economic Development Advisory Committee, Finance Committee, Historic Preservation Board, Planning Commission, Recreation Advisory Committee, Teen Recreation Advisory Committee, Tree Advisory Committee, and Zoning Board of Adjustment.
All right. Let's start off with the Economic Development Advisory Committee, please. And since I'm seat one, I'm going to go ahead and nominate the Paula Stark, name her as my seat one. She had asked for reappointment. And you have a seat two, Councilmember Paul.
I'm gonna nominate Susan Amshire. She, I did speak with her and she wants to stay on there, so.
All right. Thank you. And we have Councilmember Urban, seat three.
I'd like to nominate Bobby Bryant-Lantry.
Thank you. And seat four, Councilmember Gilbert.
No, excuse me, we have one more vacant, uh, number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. In, in the yellow. All right. And we have an out-large seat, seat number seven. Anyone? Councilmember Gilbert or Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Fletcher, do y'all have anybody?
I'd like to, I actually have two things. I'd like to nominate Jackie, I can't pronounce the last name, to seat seven. And then I think we should take a look at seat five because they haven't attended out of the last six.
The board recommended removing, um, seat five.
So Jackie. Oh, yeah. You're saying the EDAC board recommended removing. And that would be, Council, Deputy Mayor Fletcher, that would be your seat to select somebody.
Yes, I would recommend Jackie.
Jackie for that seat. I thought you just recommended for the seven, the vacant one.
Well, all right. Well, it's my seat, so.
You want to do it for yours?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll do yours there. And Councilmember Gilbert, would you like to make a nomination for somebody for the vacant number seven seat at large?
Yeah, if I say the name wrong, please do me two check?
Correct him. He, it's okay. All right. Yeah, where is she at? Okay, there we go. All right. That fills the EDAC boards.
Mayor, may I have a motion in a second, please?
Let's go ahead and get a motion for all of the names for the EDAC board. Motion to approve. Motion approved from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Next, we have the Finance Committee.
Please, also co-terminals.
Okay, thank you. I am seat one. I would like to put in there James Moore. And Councilmember Paul, seat two.
I will nominate David Reinhardt as requested reappointment.
Councilmember, hold on. Is not Urban's, Councilmember Urban's seat not available as well?
No.
Since he's on the same.
It's seat one and two.
Are they, is he not co-terminist with us?
And, but this one, well, I guess, yeah, he could probably, but it says that his wasn't up till 2027. He was elected in 6922. So, yeah, you, you may be right.
I'm confused.
You may be right about that, yes. I'm sorry.
Well, if it's co-terminist, then it is.
It's with us three, because he, he ran for reelection, I think that's, or he took over, Councilmember Cooper's.
That's, that's probably what threw off the timing of it all, but I think that is.
I just thought that we'd stay with her.
That's a co-terminist.
Councilmember Urban, would you like to select somebody for your seat?
So did Alex Brooks reapply for this?
I do not have her as a reapplication.
Well, probably because he wasn't sure that his seat was off.
Exactly.
Can I come back at the next meet? I wasn't prepared to make a selection.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Can we go ahead and get a motion to approve seat one and seat two?
Motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gilbert.
Second.
Second from Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Next up, we have the Historic Preservation Board. All right. These are out-large seats. We have Patrice Campbell, seat two. She has requested reappointment. Do, do we want to take motions on each one or just?
We could just do a slate, just like you're doing.
Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion of, I'd like to reappoint Patrice on the at-large. And now we have seat three, which is also at-large. Bobby Bryant termed out, so that's an open seat.
Could I entertain nominating Melvin Welch to seat three?
All right. We got Mel, seat three. And now we have seat number four. That's an at-large seat as well. I would like to, if no other council member has anyone in mind? Nope. I take that one back. Sorry. Anybody else have any? You like Mitchell Miski? Okay. That is for seat number four.
And Mayor, if I may, just, prior councils, when there were boards that had alternate positions on it, when there was a vacancy, they would consider the alternate as one of the people that would move from an alternate position to a regular position. I think some of the council members might remember that was sort of like a, it was sort of like a, I don't want to say unwritten policy, but that was it. So I just wanted to point out, you could, you could move someone from an alternate position into one of those vacant positions.
May I retract, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And put Don Snell in that, in that area and then put Mitch in the alternate two, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So we have Don as the seat four and Mitchell in the alternate two. And that fills the slate. All right. Next up, we have the Planning Commission.
May I please have a motion?
Let's go ahead and take a motion on the Historic Preservation Board.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Deputy Mayor Fletcher, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson? Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next up we have the Planning Commission. These are also at-large seats. I would like to nominate Megan Marshall for seat four.
I would like.
Go ahead, sorry.
To nominate Ruby Bridgeforth for seat number five.
I'd like to renominate Don Gridsby.
Um, do you want to put her to the, I've already, she's already, the seat four is already Megan Marshall.
That's fine, whatever's open, all, all two is fine.
All right, can I get a motion to approve that slate?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from, uh, Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next we have the Recreation Advisory Committee. And City Manager, we'd like to, would you like to discuss this?
I, I would actually request that the Deputy City Manager address this.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Scott Davidoff, Deputy City Manager. There are currently three committees that operate under the Parks and Recreation Department, the Tree Advisory Committee, the Recreation Advisory Committee, and the Teen Advisory Committee. As staff has gone back and taken a look at the attendance, looked at the tasks that each one of those committees forms, staff has recommended combining those three committees into one committee. One of the things that we found was that on the Recreation Advisory Committee, there are actually two spaces there, two positions for youth members that we found have not been filled for any records that we can find that those positions have been, have remained open. Uh, so what we're recommending would be to combine those three committees, the Tree Advisory Committee, those tasks can be done by the Parks and Recreation, uh, excuse me, the Recreation Advisory Committee and the staff as part of that. And then the Teen Advisory Committee would also be able to still have youth representation, which we feel is very, very important, to get our youth involved in our committees and still have them become a part of that. This would make all those committees into one, make it a bit more effective and a bit more efficient as well.
All right, y'all have any question? Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
I didn't realize my light was on, but I would agree to combining all three of these. I think it's a little redundant. I'm sure staff would, would enjoy not having three committees that are doing the same thing. And maybe we can get some, some of these ones to be a little more dedicated, so.
And Councilmember Gilbert?
Well, I also agree with Councilmember Fletcher. Uh, I think our last workshop, we talked about what committees are not, uh, are dormant or, or things such as that. And the cost of committees, and, and I think all of them are good, but you, you have to put in staff time, meeting time, money into it. So I just have to second with Deputy Mayor Fletcher that if we combine these three, we may have a better attendance record and may get more done. Now, you'll be back here.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and start with the, um, Councilmember Paul. Uh, we have Dwayne Norman requested reappointment for seat two, but you're open to appoint somebody for that one?
Yes, I have spoken to Mr. Norman and we did have a conversation about him wanting to stay on there, so he will be my nomination.
All right, thank you. And we have Councilmember Urban, seat three.
Uh, I would renominate Tom Richmeyer.
All right, and I will go ahead and renominate, reappoint James Morinsey. Perfect attendance record. All right, next we have, uh, two alternate seats. We have alternate seat one. It's an at-large seat, so I'm open for any nominations on that.
Um, she requested, requested reappointment, so go ahead and say her.
All right, so.
Well, she only had one out of three. Hold on.
That's, yeah, let's wait on that one here.
I, I do want to point out, although it's on the next page, there are three teens instead of two, so maybe one of those teens could be that alternate.
Well, I believe those are going to be the students, right?
But there's only two student spots and there's three interested teens.
Could, could they, and I don't know, take the vacancy of alternate two and move those two?
That's what I was, that's what I was recommending. Unless the board has, obviously you can pick whomever.
Yeah, I, I think that, that, whatever you guys want to, I'm, I'll support. My thought process was, I believe those two open student seats were meant for students and that gives them the, the voice that they need. I think with the Recreation Advisory Committee, you know, there were some, uh, I know there were a lot of issues, not issues, a lot of items that will come up in the future with the growth of the law fields and, and everything else we're doing with the fields. So, Deputy Mayor Fletcher, let's go ahead and start with the alternate one. Did you have a, a name in mind? You also look at the Tree Advisory list of?
Yeah, we can, we can go with, uh, Angel Rosenthal.
Angel Rosenthal. Oh, uh, which list is that off of? I'm sorry.
That's off the Tree Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you. Under the applicants, right? Nope, I'm missing it.
That was on the teen.
So that?
She, she was the applicant. Um, she's currently, um, applying.
So you're saying for one of the student positions?
Correct.
Okay.
She's on both, actually.
Well, I was asking for the alternate one first, if you want to do that, the at-large.
Oh, I apologize, I was doing it.
That's okay. Let's do the alternate one. It's an at-large, so any, any council member can make a nomination on that.
Could you consider, uh, Council Carter Rivera, she, uh, on the Teen Advisory Committee, which had made two appointments by me, but made all three of the meetings. If we're going to dismantle that committee, could we move her over to the Recreation Advisory?
Are you saying for the student seats?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, nope.
Because they have just, they care just as much.
Wait. Um, no, she's not a student.
Oh, she's not a student?
No, she's, uh, number four on the Tree, Tree Advisory Committee.
What's her name? I'm sorry.
Carter Rivera.
I see her as a teen recreation.
She's on teen.
Why is I seeing on Tree Advisory Committee?
There, um, there, there was another sheet that was put in, um.
Oh, we, I, you got the bad one, yeah.
Yeah, we had a print, we had a print issue and we went and replaced the, the, the prints on everyone's desk. I'm so sorry.
I was putting my glasses on, I was taking them off and putting them back on.
I know, you're like, why is it? I'm like, oh, shit.
Why is this not popping up? So I, I apologize.
That's right. But would you like, but Carter is on the teen. Would you like to, to put Carter as one of the students?
Yeah, I, I, we, we have, yeah, we have that. And I'm, I'm now on that tree, right?
Okay.
And, uh, we don't have the attendance for the Tree Advisory Committee. I do know two of the members that have been there for over twenty years are no longer, I think it's Rhonda and Cameron, uh, on the team, but there are other folks on the Tree Advisory. Before they combine the committee, I just want to look at.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a, a nomination for Larissa Roderick for alternate one on the recreation. So we have alternate two seat, and that's at-large, so anybody can pick off the list. We do have a long list of applicants.
Can do Alan Sherborne.
Alan Sherborne for alternate seat two. All right, now we have the two students. Um, you mentioned Carter Rivera.
Yes, sir.
And you would like Carter Rivera on seat number eight?
Yeah, student eight, uh, yes, please.
Thank you. And then seat number nine, we have a student. I think we have requested reappointment by Isabella. And she is, has pretty good attendance there. Is that, uh?
I'll nominate Isabella.
You'll nominate Isabella? Okay. So I believe that fills all of our seats. That's for seat nine, Isabella. All right, and can I get a motion to approve that slate?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next up we have the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And these are all at-large seats. I would go ahead and nominate, uh, to reappoint George Mathis, seat five. These guys have, most of them have pretty good attendance record on this.
Could I suggest since, uh, Megan Marshall isn't seeking reappointment, uh, could I nominate Ronald Hood to that seat?
All right, we have Ronald Hood for seat number four. And now we have two alternate seats, alternate one. Both of these are at-large.
I'll nominate Ruby Bridgeforth for alternate number one.
We have Ruby Bridgeforth, alternate number one. And alternate number two is in that large as well. Well, um, since, we'll go with the first choice, if that's okay. If you guys don't have anybody for alternate number two, this was his first choice, David Mendez. For alternate seat number two. And can I get a motion to approve that slate?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Urban, second from Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, the next items on the agenda are ordinances before the council for first reading and introduction for the sole purpose of the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for a final hearing. The council will not take final action on this item tonight. Full presentations and public input on the ordinances will occur at final hearing at the, at which the council will consider final action. Madam Clerk, please call the, uh, read the item.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment to the zoning map of the Land Development Code and the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of property plus minus one point zero-one acres identified as far as Cove Lane from a agricultural zoning designation to R-one B single family dwelling zoning designation with a low-density residential future land use designation located north of Friars Cove Lane and west of Clint Avenue, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map following the Planning Commission's recommendations, improve of publication, severability, and effective date.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Councilmember Paul. We have two out of the room, but we have a quorum. So, second, we have a second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban. Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-nine. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment to the zoning map of the Land Development Code and the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus one point one-three acres identified as Taveras Santiago from RS-two single-family residential to R-one single-family dwelling zoning designation with a low-density residential future land use designation generally located east of Orange Avenue, north of East Tenth Street, and south of East Fifth Street and west of Rosendale Avenue, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
All right, can I get a motion to approve this item?
Motion approved.
Uh, motion from Councilmember Gilbert.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell. I'm sorry, Mayor Robertson.
You did it again.
I'm so sorry. My brain's on auto drive.
Say Topicalaga.
Lake Tahoe.
Aye.
Four zero. I'm sorry, I'm on auto drive.
You're good. Madam Clerk, please call, read the next item.
I'm so sorry. First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-two-five dash ten. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter three performance and sitting standards of the Land Development Code by amending article thirteen titled Special Purpose and Overly Districts by adding section three point thirteen point four marina and docking facilities to establish standards for commercial marinas and docking facilities, providing for severability, scribners errors in conflict, and conflict administrative corrections codification. Publication effective date.
All right, can I get a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-five dash eleven. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, signing a future land use designation with low-density residential for approximately plus minus one thirteen acres identified as Taveras Santiago, located east of Orange Avenue, north of East of Tenth Street, south of East of Fifth Street, and west of Rosendale Avenue, providing for many official future land use map and comprehensive plan following the Planning Commission's recommendations, and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date.
And can I get a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert. Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twelve. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately plus minus four point sixty-three acres identified as non-hometown homes located east of Norcusi Road and north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, south of Lillian Lee Road and west of Puffin Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seven one point zero-four-four Florida statutes.
And can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion from, uh, Councilmember Urban, second Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert. Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Let me give you a second to brief.
Give me one second.
It's been a while since I've read this much.
Give me one second. Okay.
You want some Skittles?
I'm okay, but thank you. Okay. First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-five dash thirteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, signing a future land use designation of medium-density residential for approximately plus minus seventeen point sixty-four acres identified as non-hometown homes located east of Norcusi Road and north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and south of Lillian Lee Road, west of Puffin Road, providing for many official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, approve of publication, applicability, and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, and City Attorney, do you have anything to add to this?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. And City Manager Miller?
I'm sorry, I have several things to discuss this evening. Topicalaga first, um, speaking tiger.
What's the secret?
In addition to the smallest, sorry, safest small town in Florida, we are number thirty-seven in the entire United States.
All right.
Lots of love to our police department. And in addition to that, Wallet Hub ranked St. Cloud number forty-four in the best small cities to start a business in the U.S. And just pointing out, our number has improved consistently every year, so we're really proud of that. The procurement department, uh, for the fourth year, just received the Award of Excellence, so we're very proud of them with that. Going along with the Wallet Hub. Going along with the Wallet Hub, we went live with Project Docs, which is a software that allows you when you're applying for your permits and the planning department to upload your plans electronically, getting away from paper. So we, we are pretty proud that we have now joined the twenty-first century. On that, also joining the twenty-first century, very proud our HR department implemented some additional software modules in our NeoGov that allows us to have our HR form, our HR forms online now internally, so that, we're excited about that. And we have been able, we also opened up the e-learning module, opening up to lots of training opportunities for our staff. Okay, then, at the end of the month, we will be installing the School Zone cameras. So I did talk to Osceola County, they are currently at the same company in the process of installing their cameras also, so I did ask them if there could be some opportunity for our announcements to go together, that, that way, you know, people realize it's not just the county or it's not just us. So I think we're going to have our communications departments maybe try to coordinate a little bit on that. But they did say they had already filmed a PSA, so not, not sure how much, we might be too late when I, when I made the request. Last item, so I know several of our council members are going to Washington, D.C. to fight for St. Cloud, and we needed to select federal lobby project for this year, so we're still waiting for the final budget to be approved that was going to give us money, thanks to Congressman Soto, for the police department's equipment in our new EOC. So we're still going to need to push that, that that budget gets approved with that, but that's our last year's budget, so for this year's request, we're recommending, along the lines of safest city, we would like to ask for one million dollars for us to be able to buy five trailers that within those five trailers would have seventy-two barricades that will stop a car in case of anybody trying to attack the pedestrians like New Orleans have had occur recently. So we don't have any other current projects right now that would meet the necessary timelines, so that, that's our recommendation for this year. If, I think I see three nods, so...
And that's also Gray Robinson that handles the lobbying for that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. But that, that will give those of you going to Washington, D.C., an ask. So we'll give you some more information, give you a fact sheet. That's it, thank you.
Are, are we going to ask Congressman Soto to sponsor that?
Yes. He's the only one who sponsors anything for us, so we love him.
All right. And Councilmember Paul?
Want to say in honor of black history, there are a couple of events that will be taking place next week. I know Granny Southern Smokehouse is hosting a black history celebration downtown St. Cloud, as well as City of St. Cloud will be hosting Community Day at Hawkins Park, so anyone not doing anything, I encourage you to get out and explore the history that is here locally in St. Cloud. Thank you.
And Councilmember Urban?
I have seventeen items now. Everybody have a good day.
Are you good?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
I have a couple of things. I had, I would like to have a workshop on our historic preservation, the ordinance, the board, everything. I was, you know, I've been paying attention to the Historic Preservation Board, and I think there's some, some improvements in the process that we could definitely make, so I'd like to, you know, schedule it in the future, if, if we could have staff, you know, kind of put our schedules together, not necessarily something that's like emergency level, but somewhere in the line. The next item is, is I had spoken to the City Manager to get an update on where our letter was regarding the intergovernmental workshop, they're working on that, happy to hear. And then the last item that I had is, there's a nonprofit organization that holds events in the city, they've had a couple of events in the city, and the, the lakefront is not available, because it's going to be under construction, so they're asking to, to, they're going to use the ranch instead. I know we just pulled back the, you know, the ordinances or the, the ordinance to not waive fees, but they're, so last year they paid, you know, almost two thousand, but the ranch is almost double that, so they're asking if we could, could bring it down to what they paid last year. And I figured I'd bring it to the council.
What was the organization?
It is the Pride of the Cloud event.
The what?
The Pride of the Cloud event in June.
And if, if I may, we did, we are installing the shade structures that the City Council asked for, and we did reach out to, to see if there was a way that the contractor could adjust the schedule, because they, they're actually there for quite a bit of time, they had already planned on doing the event, and unfortunately, we can't do anything about the schedule, and I think it's important that we keep moving forward with the shade structure for the summer, so I just wanted to provide that additional information. So it wasn't at their fault, it was, it was at, at the city's.
So you're saying what, the shade structures are, oh, at the lakefront?
Right, the City Council asked us to, and I don't have authority to, which I love our, our new waivers, but I, I don't have any authority now in, in a unique situation like this, which is something that we caused, to, to do waivers, which I would love to, if the council would consider allowing me to have a little bit of authority in those unique situations, but I, but staff does support this request.
And the, so, so I have a printout here, I mean, so like, so for example, the, the special permit fee, stage, event, trailers, bleachers, there's a whole long list of things that were required at the lakefront which wouldn't be required at the ranch. So, you know, I, they came to me, so I told them I'd bring, I'd bring the request forward in this unique circumstance, but next year, they'd be going back to the original location. Um, did you?
Yeah, you're saying that that's the, it was the fee they were paying last year?
Right.
You're just, because they had to move the location? I have no problem with that, do you just need consensus from us, or have you?
Yeah, to kind of streamline things, I'd also like to see if we could delegate authority to the City Manager in future situations to be able to work on things like this, so she doesn't have to bring it back, unless it's like a major, major...
I agree, if it's something like this situation where they, it's a facility that they can't use because of us, we can honor, at least it was something that they, they were already signed up going to use.
They, they, it's an event that they do every year, so when they went to book it, they're like, hey, you know, the...
It wasn't available.
It wasn't available because of the construction. And like we've discussed in the previous workshops, I'm right there like, we got to cover costs, got to cover costs, got to cover costs. And I think the City Manager and our team has done a great job, and just in this instance, it's like, wow, this is a big increase for them, so...
And you said, but if not for us having a project there...
Then they would be able to do it, yeah, because I mean, they obviously have budget constraints too, so I told them I'd ask.
No, I agree, if it's something in this kind of a situation where we can't give them the space that they use annually, then that's fine.
Thank you.
Let the City Manager can make that call.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And we have Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, a couple of things, Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak on this. At last meeting, maybe last month or the month before, we looked at inspections for rental properties to do a, a occupancy, certificate of occupancy for rental properties by, by landlords for safety sakes and for reasons, we have some of these facilities here and houses for rent that are up there in age and, and don't, maybe get a look at outside but not inside, but every business we have to have a, a certificate of occupancy. I would really like this City Manager to look at staff, and when we first talked about it, I was told that really doesn't happen in Florida. Further investigation by Mr. Manzares, which was great, says there are a lot of cities that do that, especially a lot of the cities, coastal cities, a lot of older cities in Florida that have inspections for certificates of occupancy for landlords. And I have to say this because I'm a landlord myself and I have no problem with doing that, because it's a safety issue for the city and also for the renters, so I don't know if we can make a motion to look into a certificate of occupancy for renters, and I, I don't know how that process takes place, but I would like us, as council, to kind of look into it to protect our citizens that are renters.
I'm going to let the City Attorney speak on this first.
So it would require an ordinance, there are a couple of cities in central Florida that have them, we would, we could essentially bring back an ordinance, we could either bring it back at first reading for a discussion or part of a workshop, whichever one you wanted to do, so...
I think a workshop, I'd like to talk about that.
Okay.
I've never seen it, but I, I'm interested in hearing about it.
All right, so I will, if, we can put together just a draft ordinance and then we can do a little presentation and see what we can find out in the meantime about the problems with it, where, you know, whatever pushback some cities have had when they've tried to do this. Because it will be, it will be likely an additional cost to the landlord, which likely be passed on to the tenant, so, you know...
I get the additional cost, but also I'm, safety concerns, they are just more so than ever because of the, some of our structures and the age of some of our structures here that are rented out, and not just those structures, but the neighbors next to them, because as you said, Mr. Manzares earlier, there's some of these houses that are built like they're really close together, so if something were to happen, then it could, could have gone to their neighbor's house, so... So I'd just like to follow up with that, and then secondly, during our last workshop, we talked about the wayward signs, and they were put on hold because of the arch. I would just like to see if the timeframe, if that is going in motion, because I think that's going to be a great benefit to the city with the wayward signs, the wayfair signs, I call them town criers, where however you want to call them, but I would like to see that to move forward and get those things at least ordered and installed, so I don't know how to go about that, but I'm asking the council to consider that, so we can get those signs in the downtown indirectionals signs.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher, do you still have your light and City Attorney? Are you guys...
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
That's right.
I got, I got one thing, just to follow up on the, the occupancy. I would imagine that would give, that's, would be an enforcement mechanism. So for example, I had an issue with some, an elderly lady had contacted me, the landlord had not, like, like there was a plumbing issue that was kind of the landlord problem and all of this stuff, so could we go in if we did that and like revoke the occupancy permit? Or we'll just talk about it later?
We could talk about it a little bit more, the, the intent of that is to, from a code enforcement perspective, is to avoid that problem by requiring an inspection before the tenant moves in, so, but we could, we could talk a little bit more about how far it can go.
You mean, we're not going to be kicking indoors and... Police chief?
Don't give me any ideas.
We would not do that.
And I'm happy to just get a schedule for those wayfinding signs of, that's on it.
Thank you, and you'll beg me for this, all I have to do.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. And just one quick thing for me, I spoke with City Manager earlier, we did have, have a gentleman that requested that one of the ball fields be named in his honor, I guess it was a coach for many years. Speaking with the City Manager, she wanted to look at kind of the code, so I just want to ask if, if the staff could look into the, the process and if this is allowed.
I, I believe there's a policy, I just, I, I need to research it.
Okay.
Who is it?
Uh, who made the request?
No, who is the longtime coach?
While you're saying that, I forgot to mention, there's, there's a rodeo parade going on this weekend, I hope you like it, everybody online.
Thank you, fill, fill in the time. That's my PSA for today. All right, give me, give me the, I'll tell you who.
Oh, it's mine, I was just curious if I knew him from being a kid right here.
One minute. I'll have to get back to the other one, sir. All right, and as Councilmember Gilbert said, we do have the rodeo coming up this weekend, and also I will be in the auction ring on Saturday evening for all the, I guess